Calling this meeting to order, May eleventh at seven thirty-two P M. Apologies, I stayed two minutes late. Um, let's just start as we always do with the weather from our local weatherman.
So we're here. We are very, very good. Good news for the bookends, that's for sure. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. And welcome to a beautiful day here in Martin's additions. Yesterday was especially beautiful because we had such beautiful weather for the uh, party on the sidewalk. An interesting thing I noted yesterday to everybody, uh, that the, the sky had a very milky opaque whitish type of appearance to it, very hazy, smoky look, and that's what it was. It was smoke from wildfires in Canada that had gotten caught up in the jet stream. And had actually found its way down into our fair realm is on, out onto the east coast, and there was a little bit more left over today. But there were some clouds up there. Yesterday, there were no clouds. It was just the, it was just the, uh, it's the smoke. Uh, for the next couple of days, well, tomorrow's going to be beautiful. Showers. Probably wouldn't be a good idea to do any gardening on Saturday, but for Mother's Day, that's the pick day. It's going to be beautiful. That's the way it looks right now. So enjoy the weather. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for making that happen Sunday. Um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch around the agenda briefly, um, just because we, we are fortunate this evening to have with us. Um, Senator Walz Stryker and delegates Kaufman and Shetty, and I think Solomon as well has just joined us. Um, and I know that based on my conversation with, with Senator Walz Stryker yesterday at our sidewalk event, that our representatives are making the rounds in the communities that they represent, which we're really grateful for and everything that they've been doing on our behalf and everyone's behalf. Um, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to briefly say hello. Um, you know, we have a, a part of this, uh, monthly uh, meeting that has resident comments. I don't think we need to do Q and A's with you guys just to, to spare you all the, the time that those take. But, um, if there are any issues that come up later in resident comments, uh, we record these meetings, of course, and we would be happy to share any questions that, uh, come our way that are directed at you. So with that, um, Senator, and then I, I'd love to open the floor to any of the delegates as well to say, say a few words. So thank you again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having the four of us this evening. I really appreciate it. And thank you for yesterday. I had a wonderful time uh, meeting with residents, village, uh, residents at the sidewalk celebration. And uh, as was mentioned, the weather was just fantastic. And so thank you for putting that on and and congratulations to everyone who put their name forward to run, uh, for the Board of Managers. It is, um, it takes a lot to put yourself out there. The four of us know that better than anyone. It is not easy. And so congratulations to everyone who put their name on last night's, uh, ballot. So, uh, the four of us are meeting with all our municipal officials, uh, during what we call the interim, which is really the off season between legislative sessions. Just to make sure you guys are updated on our work in Annapolis and how it affects your municipality. Uh, so let me start with this. It was a very good year in Annapolis, a great year for policy and a great year for budgeting. And we're returning a tremendous amount of resources to our county and to our municipalities. That'll flow directly to you in the village. And, uh, and, and we're always thinking about you and working hard on your behalf. Um, I know that the village has a lot of needs when it comes especially to Brookville Road and the sidewalk along Brookville Road. Uh, and the four of us are, as a team are committed to make sure that you have the resources that you need to make the improvements for your residents. Um, a long time ago before COVID, um, the sidewalk right in front of LaFirm was chipping. And as many of you know, LaFirm tends, uh, to attract a slightly older audience, and that's where people were kind of dropping off people with disabilities, and we were able to get that curb fixed. And that's kind of a small example of what really needs to happen along the whole length of Brookville Road, uh, within the village. And we're committed to working in partnership with you to make that happen. Um, I will say, as I've said in other municipal meetings, um, I know you're passing a budget tonight, and, um, I know you guys have acted with fiscal responsibility over years and are in a really good place. That is an important thing. Um, my impression, and I'll just speak for myself here, and, and Delegate Shetty and Delegate Solomon sit on the Budget Committee as leaders on that committee. My impression is that this year in Annapolis was likely the last easy budget that we're gonna have. Um, that there are storm clouds, uh, on the horizon, um, literally for this upcoming few days, but figuratively over the next three years, uh, with a possible or maybe even likely recession happening. Uh, that will directly impact, uh, our revenue, and that will directly impact our ability to fund our municipalities. Um, I was in office during the Great Recession, the last time we went through a decline in revenue, and municipalities got hit hard, got hit really hard. And user fees and highway money that goes directly to municipalities, uh, evaporated very quickly, was one of the first things to go. Uh, I'm dedicated to making sure that history doesn't repeat itself there. Um, but of course, the, the, you know, the village needs to take steps in preparation uh, for that possibility. And, and I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news there. Um, but all in all, a wonderful session, um, and we really appreciate each and every one of you. Um, I saw so many of you last night in person. Um, I look forward, uh, for the opportunity to get together again soon, and, um, thank you so much for this invitation. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll turn, turn it over to, uh, my partner delegate, Aaron Kaufman.
Thank you, Senator Walz Stryker. Uh, I really appreciate it. Um, Martin's Edition has, has a special place in my heart because I live in Rollingwood and Turner Lane and um, as a kid, I got my haircut by John in Orlando at the barber shop. And I went to Olympia Coffee Shop most Saturday mornings. And, uh, and I, uh, you know, of course, we picked up things at Brookfield Market. When I was growing up, uh, Bonnie Ball was the assistant manager and Moragordi was the manager. And it's so nice to finally meet the famous, uh, Keith Allen that my friend Asher Ellis has been talking about for years. Uh, but I wanted to just say that, so Martin's Edition always has a special place in my heart. We had our, uh, bar, uh, my brother and I had our bar mitzvah receptions at LaFirm, and we still go. So I, I have, I love Martin's Edition, and it was a major part of my childhood. And it's a major part of my life still. But in terms of the legislative session, I just wanted to touch on two things briefly. Uh, and that is that I was, um, I pushed for a piece of legislation that would have greatly benefited uh, municipalities. It would have enabled municipalities to purchase and maintain their own, uh, streetlights. And for the first time in 12 years, the legislation made it pass the House. Uh, it passed the House of Delegates, but it did not pass in the, um, Senate, but I will fight, uh, as long as I'm fortunate enough to serve in the legislature for municipalities as well my colleagues. And so I will reintroduce that bill next year. And I also just briefly want to talk about a bill, um, that, uh, is hopefully will be signed by the governor on Tuesday, and that is, uh, that a bill that would have, uh, that will require that school systems reimburse parents not only for their legal fees in special education cases when they prevail, but their expert witness fees. Uh, because those can run about fifteen hundred dollars a day. Um, and uh, it means that in many instances, uh, parents simply cannot advocate for their children in the way that they wish to. Uh, because they simply can't afford it. So hopefully with the prospect of reimbursement, um, uh, more parents will be able to advocate for their children with disabilities. Um, so I'll gladly, uh, take questions. My email address is Aaron.Caufman@house.state.md.us. And for the next speaker that I'm going to introduce, I've been friends with the next speaker for uh, 15 years, and I, uh, I've always known that she's awesome and amazing, but I'm really glad that the people of Maryland have gotten the chance to, and the people of Martin's Edition have gotten the chance to see what I've always known about. Uh, Delegate Emily Shetty, that she's just terrific. And Jared and Jeff are awesome too. So I'm gonna turn it over to Delegate Shetty now.
Thank you, Delegate Kaufman. Uh, we have been friends for a super long time. I'm very privileged to say, um, hi, everybody. Good evening. It's lovely to join you, uh, today. Thank you so much for making time for us on your busy agenda. Uh, we really, really appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be before you and just share a little bit about, um, about session in Annapolis. Um, before I kind of get a little bit into it, I just want to put a plug in that, um, all of us maintain, um, like really active lists that, um, we email, like fairly detailed updates to. So I would encourage you to, um, to sign up if you can. Um, you can, um, you can sign up on mine on my website, EmilyShetty.com. Um, and I know, um, Senator Walz Stryker sends out pretty much like weekly, uh, really great, uh, emails, uh, both from his official and his campaign accounts. So, um, and I know Delegate Solomon sends out very thorough ones too, and Delegate Kaufman is setting his up too. So um, encourage you to sign up for those because during session, we send out really detailed, uh, emails about what's happening in the moment during session. Um, and it's, um, you know, I, I can speak to mine. Uh, it's, mine is like really nerdy, um, and thorough. And so if you're, uh, into that sort of reading, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of good stuff to check out. Um, so, uh, that said, um, as Senator Walz Stryker noted, we did have a very productive legislative session, um, this year. Um, I'm privileged to, um, serve as your representative, serving in my fifth year, so second term. Um, and, um, I had previously served four years on the House Judiciary Committee and was moved over to join Delegate Solomon on the House Appropriations Committee, where I just like drank from a fire hose all session long and tried to learn as much as I could about the state budget and, um, how we could really impact Marylanders' lives, not only through, um, you know, the appropriations work that we do, um, through project funding and the capital budget, but also um, the programmatic funds that you spend, um, through the state budget, um, on a variety of different programs that help Marylanders. So, um, I am now the Subcommittee Chair on the Health and Social Services Subcommittee, so uh, Medicaid, um, housing, and, um, a lot of our, um, our, our, uh, family services programs, um, SNAP, uh, and like all of our anti-hunger programs that go through, um, through that Subcommittee. So, um, spending a lot of time this interim really focused on how we can help uh, lift families out of poverty and, um, out of hunger in particular. Um, we have, uh, an extreme need, um, that really, uh, came to a head during the pandemic. Um, we did a huge amount of constituent casework in every single zip code, uh, including in Martin's Edition, um, helping a variety of constituents with really serious cases, um, some ranging from healthcare issues to unemployment issues, but a lot of them were hunger and access to services. And so um, certainly we don't want to wait for a pandemic to come before we act to support Marylanders across our uh, state and county. And so, um, so this interim, I'm very, very focused on, you know, how we can improve, uh, the lives of Marylanders, um, through those needs. Um, this past session, um, got a couple of, um, smaller bills passed. One is related to composting and expanding, um, access to on-farm composting so that we have, as, um, more and more residences and municipalities in particular are taking, um, or signing contracts to do composting and diverting waste from landfills, which by the way, I'm sure you know, is like a cost savings to your municipal budget. Uh, we want to make sure that there are places to send, uh, the compost, the food waste. So, um, so right now Prince George's County has a great facility, but it's going to reach capacity soon. And so having, you know, farms in the ag reserve that can set out compost, uh, uh, sites, um, create sort of this closed loop ecosystem where, you know, food waste in Montgomery County goes to create compost on farms that then generate food, most of which will come back to Montgomery County. So, um, very proud to have passed that and then worked on a small bill related to rare disease, but mostly focused this session on the budget. And I know Delegate Solomon is going to, um, go, uh, way more in the weeds than I can on, uh, on some of the provisions that we worked on, uh, that really help, um, Montgomery County and, um, the municipality in particular. So um, I'm going to turn it over to him, um, now to, to, uh, speak to that and, and many more things. So Delegate Solomon.
Thank you, Delegate Shetty. Um, it's really nice to be with everybody tonight, and, uh, congratulations to everybody, uh, who, uh, who was victorious, and thank you for, for your service. Um, uh, we know it's, uh, sometimes a thankless task, but we really appreciate the work, um, particularly at the local level that you all do. Um, so it's great to be here. Um, Delegate Shetty is incredibly modest. It's been amazing having her, um, on, uh, as a partner on appropriations. You are well represented on the, on the Budget Committee, um, as well as the Capital Budget Committee, which helps us bring home, uh, a little bit more bacon, not only for our district, but obviously for the county. Um, and Delegate Shetty is, uh, actually the Vice Chair, uh, or Caucus Vice Chair of our, of our local delegation. Um, and she and, uh, and our, uh, colleague from, from Rockville, Delegate Julie Blakovich Kar have been just great leaders for Montgomery County, um, with, uh, with House Leadership. And, and we really did bring home the bacon for, uh, for our community. Um, overall, the funding levels from Montgomery County, we got, uh, an eight percent increase in state aid, um, which included an extra seventy-one million dollars for education funding, um, from the, on the operating side of the budget, and then eighty-four million, uh, increase in, um, public school capital projects, which obviously is a huge need for our community, um, that we get what we, what we need for our capital projects. Um, we also brought, you know, a, a good bit of money back, uh, to our district, um, that our whole team really prioritized. And, and for you all, I think, you know, it's, uh, most impactful for the community. We got another million dollars for Roundhouse Theater, so they can continue to expand um, and really become the, you know, preeminent, um, regional theater in, in our, in our community. Um, we got another million dollars for the Bethesda Women's Market Project, um, which brings the total up to about four million over the past two years, um, which is for, um, for the parking lots to be undergrounded and be turned into parks, um, which is just gonna be an incredible, um, addition to, to our community, um, you know, in Chevy Chase and Bethesda. Um, and then, you know, broader, you know, for the county priorities, there are two, two things I wanted to touch on. Um, we really prioritize funding for the county's transportation needs. And what that looks like, uh, in particular is work to build out the Bus Rapid Transit Network. Um, you know, further complete the, the network on, on Colesville Road on Route, uh, twenty-nine, and then bring funding back to allow the county to, to implement the, the Bus Rapid Transit on three fifty-five on Rockville Pike, and then the eventual line that's gonna go, uh, down Veers Mill to connect Silver Spring and Wheaton to, to Rockville and, and Points West. Um, and so we were able to essentially get the county the ability to bond what is a guaranteed source of about twenty million dollars a year, um, that's tied to, uh, revenue bonds for the state-owned stadiums. And then this year, we were able to, to get the county the authority to actually bond that money. So what's already a pretty sizable stream of money will now be, be turned into quite a bit more, um, that the county can use to sort of supercharge our transportation needs, which, uh, we know are really important. Um, and that's our pathway to solving gridlock. It's not widening the Beltway, which our team has, you know, has fought tooth and nail to prevent, um, from happening, and we know would just be devastating to our communities, particularly, um, the Chevy Chase neighborhoods. Um, and so that was a big deal for us. And then the other, the other project that we're, we're all super excited about, and it's just at the very edge of our district, um, is the, the new Institute for Health Computing. That's a partnership between the University of Maryland, uh, and College Park, University of Maryland Baltimore County, the University of Maryland Medical System, and the University of Maryland, um, uh, Baltimore, the Medical School, uh, for the University of Maryland system. And that could really, uh, just, I mean, we already are a hub for, for biotech and, and life sciences, but this is potentially the next frontier for, for the healthcare system to be able to do research and, um, you know, and, and, and discover breakthroughs without actually having to use wet lab space by using supercomputers, by using artificial intelligence, um, and the, the project that's underway um, at the old, uh, sort of North Bethesda, um, metro entrance. Um, some of you may be familiar if you're going up Rockville Pike on the east side, there's a, basically a big empty field on the other side of the metro tracks. That's about sixteen acres of, of vacant space. And it's, uh, eventually in, in three or four years going to be anchored by, by this new institute with the second metro entrance and a flagship building for the university system that will, um, you know, just bring a tremendous amount of development, um, you know, something we hope eventually on the scale of, uh, you know, sort of the the Boston, uh, Logan Square type, uh, type setup. Um, and so it's really exciting. We brought, you know, a whole bunch of money back to, to begin the actual institute, as well as the infrastructure dollars to go in, um, to allow further development on that parcel. Um, and obviously with, uh, you know, some of the struggles that our, our, our region has had with economic development, this is really important. And this is the kind of, uh, kind of setup that is going to bring, you know, well-paying, high-paying jobs where people are gonna want to move here and stay here for the rest of their lives. Um, so it's really exciting that, that we are well underway with that. Um, the last two things that I'll mention in terms of, uh, legislative victories, one, uh, is a bill that that is directly impactful to the municipality, and it's something that we worked on. Um, if any of you know Andy Harding over in, uh, in Section Three, um, Andy was, uh, was the, the brain, uh, brains behind this, but it uh, is a bill that Senator Walz Stryker and I worked on that will make it a little bit easier for towns, uh, municipalities when they make, uh, changes to their charters. So instead of having to publish the, uh, amendment in a, a newspaper record, which for our community is really just the Washington Post, um, we saved some money, um, and made that we're engaging every community member in, in changes to our democracy. Um, and so that was really, uh, really helpful. And then on a broader scale, uh, I think many of your residents will be interested in, one of the bills that, that I was most proud of this year that I worked on, that we were able to get through, uh, is a bill that will overhaul the way that we, uh, we give out, uh, college aid and scholarship programs, um, in, in the state of Maryland. So by one way of example, uh, we almost doubled the funding for the Community College, uh, Promise Program. So for example, Montgomery College is gonna go from on average getting six or seven hundred thousand dollars a year to almost two million dollars a year in, uh, in grants that they'll be able to give out to students. And we decentralized the program so that it's going to be run out of the community college. Um, and made other changes to the, you know, the, the state grant programs to make them run smoother, make them more accessible to, to more students across the state. Um, you know, we have amazing, uh, higher ed institutions in every corner of Maryland. And, uh, too often we see barriers and, and roadblocks put up for, for our students to, to be able to access the money to go to the schools. So our hope amazing K-12 system. We, you know, churn out the best high school graduates, and then we, we get those graduates to go to school in Maryland, and we get them to stay here with, uh, with a really strong economy. So that was a huge priority for me. I'm a former high school teacher. Um, so it was a, a really exciting session, and, um, you know, as, as all of my colleagues have said, one of the things we love most is working on constituent service and, and really partnering with our communities. So if you need anything, we spend a lot of time, obviously, with the State Highway Administration, but, uh, whether it's a state issue or our partners in, in Rockville at the county level, um, you know, we're here to help and, and just appreciate you giving us some time to, to be with you tonight.
Well, well, thank you very much. I'll, I'll let other council members chime in. I just want to say, based on your email, and I get, I get Jeff's emails. Um, we're a village full of policy wonks, so the more detailed, the better. They love it, they absorb it, they digest it, and um, we hear from them, uh, during our monthly meetings and, and beyond. So I don't know if any of the council members wanted to make a comment, but we really appreciate you coming here this evening and, and, uh, and reporting out on, on this past session.
Good to see everyone up close and personal, as it were.
Yeah, thank you for the updates from the apples.
Thank you so much. Uh, feel free to stick around, um, or return to, uh, your families this evening. Uh, but again, thank you very much for joining us. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Aaron, I just wanted to say, I've seen you in front of your house, uh, going up and down the hill in your chair as I've gone walking by over the years. Well, I'm really glad to see, uh, you did okay.
Uh, yes, um, I, 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 I prioritize my exercise and thanks to, uh, thanks to, uh, a wonderful support system and a vibrant community. And these three wonderful friends of mine, uh, for the first time, as far as I know, I'm the first person with a permanent disability to serve in Annapolis. So, but I wouldn't have done it without all these wonderful community members. So.
Oh, congratulations. Nice to have a neighbor on board today.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, we'll, uh, we'll now turn to, uh, to resident comments. Um, there we, we, yes, no, no, there'll be many. Trust us, you have plenty of time. Um, and I see Marty's hand up first. Uh, so Marty, please feel free to unmute yourself and, uh, go for it.
Thank you, Andrew. And I want to thank, um, Senator Jeff and all of our three delegates, all of whom I get your emails, and I just appreciate your work so much. I want to mention a couple of things that I'm thankful for that you didn't mention. One is the, uh, the reforestation bills that you passed, SB five-two-six and HB seven-two-three to plant more trees because we've had a lot of loss of our tree, our old trees here at Martin's Editions. And I just want to thank you for doing that. Those two forest conservation bills really matter to me, and I think a lot of our friends. I also want to thank you for your work on reproductive freedom for the whole state. Um, and also for thanking, strengthening the sexual assault laws for Maryland. I'm the past president of the D C Rape Crisis Center, and that was a set of bills that I was really following. So thank you very much for that. And, uh, ace work on the funding, and I, we look forward to your good guidance as we go into a possible recession. Um, really appreciate you working with municipalities. And I gotta mention Brookville Road and flooding, um, which are two big infrastructure issues. And thank you for maintaining, shall we say, a very close rapport and oversight of the State Highway Administration. We'd like a couple of things on, on Brookfield Road done besides the sidewalk project, which is huge as a priority. I'd also like to see, a number of us would like to see, um, traffic, uh, lights at, uh, Brookville and Taylor, for example, that are, uh, pedestrian activated, uh, not just a stop sign. And you could put those a couple more places at, at Brookville and Thorn Apple too. There's a lot of kids crossing for the school bus there. And a pedestrian activated stoplight would only turn red when there are people trying to cross, but boy, I think it would make Brookville Road safer in addition to the absolutely critical sidewalk work. So thank you for staying on top of the State Highway Administration and maybe helping us get all of these things done.
Thanks, Marty. And, uh, I didn't want to keep them too long, but Michael and I, we did have a great meeting, um, earlier in the week with State Highway. Um, and walked, uh, Brookville and checked out the sidewalk, and, and we're building momentum here to get this finally done. So, um, Susan, come, please.
This is?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, just thank you for all those kind words. I really appreciate it, especially being on the Judiciary Committee. But I wanted to also let you know, if you want to ask us questions, I forgot to mention this in my remarks, so I thank you for your indulgence, Michael. We are having a town hall meeting, which is just designed to, for you to ask us questions on, um, May thirty-first, uh, seven to nine at the Kensington, uh, Town Hall. So if you like what you heard tonight, you'll, uh, but you didn't get to ask us questions, uh, come on the thirty-first. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Susan?
Um, thank you. I, I wanted to, uh, welcome all the delegates and Senator, even though they're not all here, but, um, I wanted to just mention also that, uh, we have a project on for pedestrian safety on Brookville Road, which of course is a state road. I'm especially concerned about the intersection of Brookville Road and Bradley Lane, where we could use a crosswalk and a set of stop signs. And if there's any assistance that our state delegates or Senator could provide our village staff and council, I believe that many residents in our area would be grateful. I realize you're working on other aspects of Brookville Road, but I just want to make sure that kind of stays on the radar somewhere. Um,
And just real quickly, that's, we, Mike and I actually talked about that with the State Highway folks. So, um, I think given that that's a separate issue from the sidewalk, I think we definitely will activate our, our representatives to, to help us. And I think also Marty mentioned, this has been mentioned to me a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, uh, especially the Thorn Apple intersection. Um, Taylor's always been an issue, so, so I think we'll activate and, and reach out there as well. Go ahead, Susan.
Okay. Um, thank you. That's, um, I'm really glad to hear that. Um, so I, I, I wanted to say that one of our council members previously had suggested that we think of the Village Council meeting as a place where prospective residents might visit to decide if they'd like to live here. And I think prospective residents, um, are more likely to locate in a place where they feel like they belong, and their contributions are valued, and they're treated fairly and with respect when they participate in local government. And a recent challenge we've had in this area involved a council member making some, um, comments, inappropriate comments perhaps, about residents at a council meeting in March, twenty-twenty-three. And unfortunately, when the council impunes the reputation of hardworking volunteers, it hurts our sense of community. And this incident brought up the need, on the positive side, brought up the need for our village to have in place reliable procedures for residents to respond to allegations. How can residents and council members respond to allegations made by public officials in a public forum? And how can council members work with fellow council members to address conduct in a confidential way? So I was wondering, is there a code of conduct for council members, for example? And we all share an appreciation for a healthy, um, local government, where not only residents volunteering on committees, but also council members who volunteer, volunteer their time, have a chance to address what they see as misperceptions. And recently, an allegation was made by a council member that whoever organized a listening session on a proposed ordinance had not invited one group of residents to the village-wide listening session. And two council members were careful, and, um, I wanted to note this, to correct the record at And two council members were careful, and I wanted to note this, to correct the record at the same meeting. They spoke up to defend their actions and asserted that they had indeed invited all residents to this listening session. And one, for example, one council member, this was from March, said, it's most unfortunate that the ethics committee was not invited to attend tonight's forum. And then about an hour later, a resident said, I didn't know the ethics committee members weren't invited and agree that wasn't a good idea. So without even corroboration, once it was stated, there was already a sense that, oh, maybe that was the case. But then about a half hour later, so about an hour and a half after the original thing was stated, the council members did chime in. One said, it's a little odd to hear that the ethics committee itself thought they couldn't attend. I don't see where in any shape or form, there was any discussion about how committee members should not attend. In fact, in prior listening sessions, there were ethics committee members there. And another committee, a council member said, yeah, I don't recall that conversation either that prohibited anyone. I don't recall a saying who could or could not participate. And then the other council member said, I certainly didn't see any emails from the committee members asking whether or not they should attend. So basically, the reason I bring this up is that in this incident, what made it a satisfying exchange of views for me and what provided some closure was that the allegation that residents weren't invited was stated in an event where the accused could hear it. And by accused, I mean those who organized the forum. The second thing is the accused had an opportunity to respond. And the third thing is that the accused who responded were in a position of authority. So it offered a kind of official approval for an alternate point of view. Can you imagine what it would have been like if no one had the opportunity to respond to that allegation? Or what if the response from colleagues on the council was, well, everyone should be open to criticism. We don't need to talk about the specifics. Just let people believe what they want. Or if the council had responded, I think some residents just don't care for each other and they fight each other. It's a petty squabble. Or we're sorry if something inaccurate was said at today's meeting. All those responses would not have addressed the specific issue of whether everyone was invited to the listening session or whether some people were excluded. Those responses would not have cleared the air. They would have kicked the can down the road. They would have fueled misunderstanding that could give birth to more misunderstanding among more people. But luckily, in the conversation you heard, some council members did correct the record. So I'm hopeful that over time you will show the same concern for correcting the record for residents who serve on your committees as you do to correcting the record when misinterpretations are made about your actions. So in conclusion, people are attracted to a village with a welcoming environment. And on the positive side, recent incidents of unsupported allegations have helped start an important discussion about the need to provide a fair process for residents and council members to respond to allegations and correct the record when needed and the need for council members to speak up for residents. I hope this discussion will be continued in future meetings. I know we're in the middle of an election cycle. I'm not expecting further discussion of this now. And I know we're busy with a, a meeting filled with honored visitors and the budget and other topics, but it's important that this discussion continue in future meetings. So if this community can develop processes to resolve disputes fairly, allowing both the accuser and the accused the opportunity to address allegations, then residents' reputations may be reclaimed and we may finally move forward as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Just a couple of quick things. So I, I personally think it was a misunderstanding, a total misunderstanding in terms of ethics committee not being able to, to attend the listening session. That, that's my point of view. And I think we should have been much more clear. So I think it's, it's probably on me and, and perhaps other council members too, but I'll, I'll take, I'll take the blame here because, uh, to me, it, it, it was surprising and maybe, maybe I was like a deer caught in the headlights when they weren't at the listening session. And instead of dialing, uh, some of the members to join quickly, we just, we just moved on. In terms of previous councils, I'm, I'm not sure how things went down. But this is not like a congressional committee where I'm going to gavel you out and say you're out of order. And you cannot respond to any comments made by council, especially if it's it back and forth between residents and council members. I, I think under my chairmanship, I've always allowed for responses and, 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 and open and mostly hopefully civil discourse. And as long as I'm on the council, I'm going to advocate for that. Some say these comments, resident comments go on and on and on, and we should have time restrictions. I've been opposed to that since, uh, since I started on this council and we, we'll be, I'll continue to be opposed to it. But I don't know if there's anything codified here in our charter that, that has some sort of mechanism in place. I just think that, uh, as long as there is a, a level of stability, residents should not be, and I, I know what you're referring to from the March meeting, should not, not find themselves in a situation where they can't respond to, to allegations and vice versa. Um, I think both, both residents making allegations and council members, there needs to be a back and forth, but maybe also maybe a different venue. To have these conversations and, and I've, I've proposed perhaps meeting offline and, uh, and, um, and, uh, and taking this, these, these, you know, these disputes somewhere else, um, and maybe into neutral territory. With that, um, I recognize and I'm sorry, I do not know your name.
My name is Liz. I'm actually a neighbor on Chestnut Street, 7218. Hi Marty, I'm actually Marty's neighbor. Want to bring to everyone a serious issue of public safety. I was recently in a really bad accident here on the parking avenue of
Brookville parking lot.
Brookville parking lot, which is your street, which is I've been here for a long time. I'm really bad with directions and I'm going to vaguely say I'm not a great driver. So I'm sitting in the parking lot and I back up and in the no parking zone is a very, very large truck, which is a lawn truck or a whatever. In my camera, it is, I can't see through my camera. I back up. The point of the truck goes right through my windshield. I say to them, hey, you're parked in a parking zone. This was a bad accident. And they told me, the owner of the company, in no uncertain words, this isn't our fault. You backed up in Maryland, parking in a no parking zone. Anyone who backs up, it's not our fault. So these people are all parked in no parking zones with no problems. And what I'm wondering is, who's policing these zones? What are we doing in Martin's additions to help these people? And Katie was there on Sunday when she saw another older elderly. What am I allowed to say now? Can anyone tell me? Resident. We just say resident. A resident of someone who's like, anyway, a resident backed up into a truck and took out a couple of cars with her with nobody to, to do anything about it. And what I'm asking for is some help in helping with this no parking zone. What can we do as a community? Help somebody? You know, we have summer coming. What's going to happen in summer? There's going to be kids here. There's going to be a parking at 12 o'clock. It's all of these cars, all of these streetlards. And I understand we have parking, but what are the consequences of parking in a no parking zone? Anybody?
We need enforcement. We talked about it. We've got to do it because it's important.
So we've got to do it. It's not an answer to me. Like what are we going to do?
So as, as, as a community, we don't have, uh, I don't think we have parking enforcement as part of our charter, but there's
but it, it depends on if it's on private, if it's on a private property back here in the alley. I'm not sure whether it's on a public road or not.
We don't currently have any parking enforcement. We don't have any parking enforcement.
We have no ticketing and parking enforcement. I mean, we've tried this.
But they would be, they would be, but they would be ticketing under account, under their county authority. Our current policy is we report parking violations to the county police and we provide the non-emergency police number at the county. And that's all we have right now.
So is the delegate still on? Are you still there? So this is my issue right now, is that the delegates want all of our money, but then when we call the non-emergency number, we're not a priority. Totally understand. We have zero issues around here. We are a high-income district. This is all on camera. Put it on camera. And that is fine. But then we ask for your help so that people don't get hurt. Like this woman was older and if she hit her head on the, on the steering wheel, she would have not been okay. Yet when I call, these people know the rules. They tell me that they can't, no one can help me. No one can help me.
Did you call the police?
What are the police going to do? They're not going to
In an accident, they will come and
They will not come. You think they're going to come to Martin's addition to help me? No, they will not.
If you have a dispute after, I mean, I've had these, the police comes and they will write
They will say, go write a report. And you know what the, you know what the insurance company tell me? In no uncertain words, you backed up into a car that's in a no parking zone. In Maryland, it's your fault. So I get that. All I hear from you guys is, well, this is our thing and this is this person's thing and this is this person's thing. But who is really helping me around here?
Well, if it's a Maryland state law.
This is more things about you guys. It's this person's problem. And now it's this person's problem. And now who is helping me in Martin's addition? To help me fix this problem?
Okay. So there's only a certain amount of things we can do jurisdictional. Okay? So in order to help you, we have to help direct you to the people that can help you. We can't solve this if this is a state law, right? It's the no parking. So you can engage the council to say, I want you to advocate to the delegates that were here and the state senator and say, change the law. That would be one way we could do it. Or, or make
Get more active police patrol.
Yeah, but the police patrol, as, as this resident just said, would not, in her opinion, show up or do anything. And the insurance would say it's the state law that makes her at fault. We can't change the state law. We can advocate. We can lobby our representatives to change that state law. That's what we can do.
Can our contract police, they can give tickets, can't they? Not Martin's additions.
Can they put companies out there to see it on park here?
Private property is what we just said. It's private property.
Well, who's private property? This person who owned it? The slum lord that owns this place?
I don't know how
The slum lord that owns this place. You guys don't do anything about it. This slum lord that owns this place?
That we don't do anything about.
Who was writing, who was, who was talking to the Montgomery County, you know, commercial real estate people at him and how he's not doing anything to fix these parking lots here? The fix these parking things.
These parking things.
The, all of the parking spots that are much too small for an area around here, when we have a no parking zone and we are allowing these huge trucks to park here. So I'll be at this meeting and you, oh, we'll advocate to someone. We'll advocate to someone. And then you guys ask me to vote for you?
This is the first time I'm, I'm here for this.
Because I got in a really bad accident. And you know what? When you ask for my vote again, and in two years I see nothing being done, this will be your
That's, that's your rights. That's fantastic. But that's, that's fantastic. You have the right to vote for whomever you want to, but if we don't hear about it, we can
Because I'm here and these meetings are at 7:30 at night when most parents can't come because it's super late. And we're all doing all these things. I get our life has changed. And one thing I do want to say around this area, life has changed. Okay? We don't have volunteers anymore. The community has changed. And I get that there's all these things about the ethics committee and the voting and you're turning people off. All of these things you guys are talking about with voting, you're turning people off. It's tuning, it's tuning us out. So right now what we need is effective change in this community. I'm asking for your help so that my kids don't get hurt. And I don't, I can park in my, in this area and then other persons don't get hurt. Instead of everyone passing the buck and saying, well, this is the city and this is someone else's problem and this is someone else's problem. They're never going to come and help us. So maybe we need to start taking matters in our own hands. What is wrong with our friend Michael walking out there with some cones every day and saying, hey, we'd like someone not to get hurt in our county? Who's going to do anything? That I'm asking for.
It, that would be like someone walking to your property and putting cones down. Uh, it's not, it's not, you can do it, but it's not
What I was told is that I need to get out of my car and walk into one of the stores here and say, and yell, excuse me, move your car. That's what I was told I'm supposed to do. So that's what you guys want me to do?
Who told you that?
I was told it's my, I have to tell these people to move their car. But fortunately, my children are older. What if I had young kids in my car?
Which could be hostile. I mean,
It seems very hostile. Katie, I have to walk out of my car and get into one of these stores and say, please move your car. I don't want to do it. I'm asking for your help.
And in all fairness to Liz, I was talking to her on the corner and we witnessed the very same accident in the very same spot, same scenario, less than 24 hours later. And it looks like this. I mean, I took, I took pictures of it because this is a constant issue with they're parked here and this is, this car just hit right into that landscape because they take up all of that room.
You, you were there and the car got hit. And she's like, there's cameras and no one can prove anything. And just no, it's just, this keeps happening to everybody. And I'm the only one who has time to come here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And, and by the way, we're all volunteers. So we have we can't do this during the day.
Which is, I, I'm a, I have volunteered for my school. I have done this time and I completely understand.
Yeah. I'm just wondering whether there is a, a practical solution working with the owner here. To put cones or bury or rope or something that would, because if what you're saying is a, a accident, if accident prone area, then, uh, we could perhaps work with them, talk to them to make it less accident. But we don't have the authority to do that.
I understand someone's going to hurt. I'm agreeing to establish extension and someone is going to hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I speak to this?
Yes, Fred. Yes.
I happen to be
I'm up here so we can hear you answer you.
I happen to be in the parking, backed up to the grocery store. I can't remember when. And there was of course vehicles parked across the street next to the firm. One of them was a post office truck, the delivery person, I guess, who delivers the mail here. And then a contractor came along with a pickup truck and was doing a really bad job of parking and he scraped the postal service truck. This was a nice guy. He went absolutely berserk trying to, you know, document the whole thing and find the guy that was delivering the mail. And I took pictures. He took pictures and, and, uh, I think I probably, I took, I, I think I deleted the pictures off my phone because at that time, this guy was taking pictures and, and the mailman came along and, and I talked with him. And, uh, so it's an issue. The, the question I have is there was a statement that said it's private property. Well, is Taylor Street private property between, you know, back of the stores, all, all the way to Brooklyn? Is that in park section?
Yeah, no. And the picture that, uh, the picture that Katie just showed me was on Taylor, not in the back parking lot where the, when it incident happened as well. So maybe that's, that's a different story there because that's part of Taylor. So either way, I mean,
Was your reaction in the back of the store?
No, no.
You were also on Taylor. Okay. I thought it was in the parking lot behind us. Okay. So that's, I mean, again, so that's the, the, the parking spots are private property, but the Taylor street part where they're parking illegally is a different story. So I'm, I'm just surprised to hear that Maryland law is, as you described it. So it's definitely something that is brought up. And I've, I've said this before, residents bringing up issues that are not, that we're not aware of obviously is helpful to activate us, but I've, I haven't heard about this. So I think it's definitely something we, we should discuss with, with our delegates.
More clarity on what our contract police could do.
Yeah.
Way of ticketing.
I mean, I've, I've had an I've, I've had an incident where I requested that they, they look at an abandoned vehicle on, on one of our streets. And, and what was the response? That they don't, and it was out of state plates that they don't, they don't ticket an out of state related vehicle, even if it was, um, even if the, uh, it was a, um,
DC expired tags.
Yeah. Um, they don't, they don't take it though. So it's, 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 that was
Okay. So they choose not to or
Well, we, we, we put in the street signs, the new parking signs and including updating this no parking signs in the last two weeks on Taylor, including right there, putting the no parking zones right along the side of the market. But we don't have any ticketing authority.
But the, the police, the county police that we hired.
Correct.
They do. Not even that we hired. County police should be able to
Yeah, not
And then once you
Not for us. They don't, they don't ticket for us.
But it goes through the county. But if we ask them
If you, if you, if you have a no parking zone, this happens every single day in this village. Someone parks in a no parking zone and they report it to me. Wait, only one person can be talking in a time in this room because of the sound quality for everyone online. So let's just be mindful of that, please. The, I get no parking complaints every single day in this village and the response has to be the same. You have to call the county. We can't do anything about it. Now, if you have an accident, you definitely should be reporting that at least to get the, to be able to have the insurance fight afterwards. I mean, that has to happen.
My insurance has said you are in the fault that you backed up. And in Maryland, when you back up into a car, it doesn't matter if it's no parking zone or not, you're at fault. So they're not going to come?
Well, the police will come, but Well, the police will come, but apparently the.
We definitely can't fix that, I mean.
But but I'm still not clear here whether if our contract police or county police, they won't. We're, they're not, we're not going, they're not gonna take it for us because they take it for the county.
No.
What, they choose not to?
They choose not to, I've asked them to, they don't do that, they don't provide that service. Besides, they're only in the village ten hours a week as well, so.
But this question is, who's we get to choose to do?
Well, yeah, this whole choosing now too, that makes no sense, you know?
Cops are gonna come help me with an accident here at Martin's additions when they got huge problems in Montgomery County.
But but police do come having experiences, even for vendor vendors to take a, take a report because it's an insurance matter. And if you don't, your insurance company will tell you, um, it's not clear to me what happened here. If you don't have pictures of it either, I mean, and then and then automatically you're probably gonna be, you know, seeing your your premium go up.
Well, your windshield glass is still there.
On the ground and if you must not live in DC because people.
Twenty years, thank you.
And they came, they came to your accidents, I I also lived there and no one came to one accident that I had. You must be more important than me. You must be more important than me, I mean, I'm so happy. Hit my car and cops wouldn't come, so I don't know. God's gift to the world, I'm so happy the cops, cops came for you, they're not gonna come for me and they're not gonna take it here and people are gonna continue getting hurt.
Alright, so so I, uh, we realize you're upset. And I make a phone call to police, they don't know who's on the other line, so whether they show up or not has nothing to do with the person who's calling.
I got it.
Okay, so so I'm just saying that your experience is different than maybe other people's experience, not that someone's god's gift to someone else, okay? So let's lower the temperature a little bit here, you you had something else?
On the no parking. Just about every intersection, the buildings, there's a no parking sign that goes back to the, to the corner. And these are, apparently the contractors, this is our private place to park, okay? They create situations sometimes where emergency vehicle, if they come along, a first responder, it would not be able to get through. Uh, we had that experience on Quincy Street one night a while back. Uh, seconds can count. There, there needs to be a change made so that this authority is vested in this community. Uh, so we don't have to go to the outside and 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 slow down, slow this stuff down, it it's just. Everything at Bradley, uh, and Brookfield. There's a no parking sign when you go in. Most, most of the time you can find a car between the no parking sign and the. Just about.
And it's a blind spot, we've been talking about as well, that happens.
And sometimes they, you know, they park there and and it's, if it's the right kind of vehicle, you lose all your sight lines. Somebody coming out.
Listen, you don't even need that or to be scared, that intersection Bradley trying to get back onto uh, onto uh, Brookville. And you have sight lines, it's scary enough to try and do that when you come.
You people are concerned about safety in the long term, this is a fix that really needs to be done. It's it's been too long the way it is and and it needs to be changed so that we can all feel more positive and more safe.
Anyone else? Okay.
Uh, Susan Sanders.
Uh, Susan, sorry, go ahead, Susan.
I just wanted to say in the past, there was a public safety task force. And this seems to me like an appropriate topic that if there were an ongoing public safety committee. They could potentially follow up in a way that, I mean, there's so many strands of this that one could follow up on. Talking to the owner who I'd like to characterize as a valued property owner, um, I think there are other references. And um, also talking to, for example, the owner of of LaFerrum, whether individual warning things or cones. Or something could be put to indicate in addition that this is a no parking area, you know, what could be done? What can we do with our own security, there's so many things to follow up on that I I understand now, I mean, the council has this in their hands and the. Our manager who has a lot going on also, and I just thought, you know, in the long run, if residents are really concerned at it. It's possible that some residents would want to serve on that type of committee to help follow up. Because um, it it does sound like a very serious concern and I'm not sure exactly how to address it, but.
Can I just say, when I first learned of acts of God with tree branches falling onto my property and damaging my property. Um, I was outraged, I think this whole idea of people parked in a no parking zone and then getting hit by by someone who's parked legitimately. That 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 there's a law saying that you're at fault even though someone's parked illegally, I think that's outrageous, I've never heard of it and I think, I think um. You know, we just had our delegates, we should talk to them about it, I wonder where that, where that comes from.
Why that would verify what the.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's just, it makes no sense and I just, I just, I'm surprised, so so we'll, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And and uh. No, I mean, these are the little things that, I mean, I, we talked to 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 Jeff Wallstriker on the sidewalk the other day. He's like, doesn't matter how small an issue, bring it to our attention, so this is a perfect example. If no one ever had this issue, then nothing's gonna change about it and clearly, um, this is based on your pictures also happening all the time. Um, so so we will follow up with them and uh, the next legislative session, unfortunately, they're just coming to an end. Um, perhaps there will be a bill introduced to say no parking is always at fault if someone hits you. I mean, that's, you know, it's a simple, that's a two line sentence for for legislative language.
Michael, I have a, I have a question, um, have you at all reached out to some of the other sections in terms of how they may deal with this? And I know this is very prevalent in DC and Bethesda and I know it's a really big problem, um. And again, it could become a real safety issue because.
They have the permit parking in parts of section three and five.
Not saying we take the time now, but just out of curiosity, have you done that and any solutions there and?
Yeah, I know Garrett Park was looking into creating, there is some sort of waiver where you could get the authority to do ticketing from the county. And you'd get trained through the county and if you have your own police department, you can do that, um, without a police department, it's a little bit more difficult. Um, unless you have, um, uh, as as Andrew said, paid parking. That, um, like the Village of Friendship Heights, which is a special tax district, they're not incorporated. They have their own parking enforcement contractor that comes in, but that's mostly enforcing their, you know, paid parking, so.
What is, what do you think village police do and like that sort of?
Yeah, they have, they have sixteen hours a day, police seeing and can respond to a lot more things, I think they do have some.
Piece of paper, I don't know if Wayne would put that on windshield when cars were parked illegally at Thorn Apple and and Chestnut and or Delfield. At that corner, that maybe it's the Chestnut intersection where cars were parked right along that. Where he would, he would put a piece of paper from the village saying you're parked illegally. But that was it. And I don't think anything.
Tickets talk, so.
Question is, is uh, is the prestigious Ron Bolt on?
He's been, he's been really quiet, maybe he's been looking up this no parking situation.
So, I I, this is not meant as a stitious comment, but um, I think it would be, it would really. Make a lot of residents, including myself, feel uh, very comfortable if we could investigate how we could. Delegate or have some sort of a proxy for ticketing authority, because I agree that when you see tickets. In neon colors, it it gets a point.
Especially they're very expensive, and by the way, speaking of God's gifts, he's a God's gift to uh, the VMA, so Ron, please.
We're gonna be meeting in closed session tonight, as I understand, so I can give you legal advice in closed session on. Code enforcement matters.
Okay, good, thank you. Awesome, thank you, okay, well, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
And um, we'll uh, we'll, we'll dig deeper here. Um, okay. Uh, approving of the minutes, starting with March, I understand the council didn't respond to the village manager on the two versions. I've reviewed both, um, and I hope the uh, the other council members have too. Uh, have also reviewed them. Um, I'm not quite sure, you know, we talked about the last time about the level of detail that goes into resident comments. And some have advocated based on Maryland state law or or whatever the, whatever the norm is that. Those shouldn't be in in great detail because we also have the audio recordings where you can, you know, where you have all of that. Um, based on that, I think version one is is the the one that I would support, but I don't know if this needs to, we need to open a conversation here and have a, have a debate. Um, before we vote and just approve something that usually um, is kind of a no brainer, so.
Could actually transcribe the parts that are unclear.
Yeah.
Um, just those particular parts, I know that one um, part that was under. Apparently intention was um, where I was speaking. And I didn't bring my transcription, I actually started to transcribe it and that part was summarized. Um, like twenty minutes before the meeting ended, I think, um, it was very. It it was really pretty much incomprehensible and not at all what I said. Which then created a a lot of confusion as to the last entry, the second. To the last substantive entry, so they can just be transcribed and it's fast, there are programs to do it and I found one and it's very fast. And it would need a little polishing, but you know, um, the alternative would be to actually maybe. Not do minutes if we're not gonna get them accurate. That would be an alternative.
Well, minutes are generally required, although some jurisdiction now, so that's right, say. That the audio can stand in place of the minutes, but the minutes I find, having gone back over past minutes.
They can be useful.
Uh, useful to see when things happened, uh, and so on, so, uh, I find brief, brief minutes uh, do the job.
Yeah, I I know, I know, it's, it's, it takes a lot of Michael's time, so I think. There's an argument to be made to keep them pretty simple and 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 succinct. Uh, and allowing, which I have done, for residents to go back and listen to the audio, uh, if you missed one of these marathons.
I support that, as I did when I was chair, as you probably know from attending a couple of meetings back then. Um, I think it is very efficient to do it, however, they really need to be pretty accurate.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, suggestion, uh, Mr. Chair. I agree, I I would, well, let's take a vote because we have to adopt some minutes, I thought the ver- the first version was fine, but I respect. The idea that others may not and one thing that we could do is take a vote on the minutes and then I think any council person. And, and also, quite frankly, any resident could then introduce an amendment. If they feel there were any corrections and submit it for the record at some point or immediately, but I just feel that. From my experience of sitting on the council, um, it's a slippery slope when it's come to trying to suggest certain edits. And I would say, let's just take a vote on a set of minutes, whichever one it is. And it's never gonna be perfect and I agree, you could transcribe, you could keep it limited. But I would say that if there aren't any uh, significant or important objections or corrections for the record, then an amendment could be submitted. For the record and.
So what I would suggest to that is fine, um, go ahead and vote on it, but if anyone has any questions about what this whole discussion is about. Go back and listen to the entire transcript, you can start twenty minutes before the end of that very, very long meeting. Um, for the end, that's all.
And I just, I want to share that in the, in the best possible way that I I do respect and I understand because I've been on this side of the fence where. I've also felt at times that there were certain things that I had wanted in the minutes and didn't get in, so I understand. What this feels like and so again, I just want to share that I think any council member or any resident should feel free. To then submit something for the record that could be included in the next packet, just so everyone feels they have their voice to get it exactly. The point that they were.
I think that just creates an endless minute keeping.
Yeah.
Just need some finality, it's supposed to be a month, two months.
I think it's, it's uh, we're overthinking some of this, I think, keeping it simple, if if there's, if if there's pushback from council members or residents, they can raise it in. In in a meeting and again, there's audio on on what what they're unhappy about.
And we should, usually the minutes are. They're distributed for people's review.
So, alright, so can we, can we uh, approve the March meeting minutes version one, can someone, would someone like to move? Make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes version one.
Okay, do we have a second? Arthur, on favor, say aye. Aye, uh, opposed?
This would be a good time to abstain if I were an abstainer, but I'm not, so I'll just be opposed with the, with the producer that perhaps anyone who's. Questioning what it's about, go back and listen.
Okay.
It's a great audio.
Susan opposes, um.
I'm just gonna make a comment, um, would it be possible to make the um, audio version searchable? I know that, I know that YouTube, um, you can make searchable, so you can just scroll along and it. It gives you captions of what the sections are. Be so awful, like if you just wanted to go back and listen to.
YouTube premium, we'd have to.
There are, the audio is uploaded to YouTube, so I can look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, it would be great, so.
Maybe it already is, who knows?
Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
So we have dumb audio, not.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't.
Alright, no, that's a great idea, I had no idea that existed. Am I surprised that it does? Yeah, okay, great, yeah, Laurie, we'll, we'll look into that, I think that'd be, I mean, I myself went through the March one and I had to.
Yeah.
Search and go back and forward, so I think that would be, that'd be awesome. Okay, fantastic, April meeting minutes, less controversial, I think. Someone would like to?
Our move to uh, uh, adopt the minutes from April.
Okay, do we have a second? All of, uh, Susan seconds, just so we have that in the minutes, or the next one, all in favor, say aye. unanimous, okay. That was good, thank you. Doug, thank you for your patience, um, we turn to our building administrator, um, if you wanna unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, at thirty-five oh six Bradley Lane, uh, the contractor has said that the county has closed their. Building permit, so we will be, uh, they don't need an extension, we'll be closing that building permit in the next week or so. At thirty-four seventeen Cummings Lane, uh, the county has issued their permits. And the next couple of weeks will be issuing a building permit for that lot. Thirty-four seventeen Cummings Lane. The county's also issued their building permit and this week we'll be issuing a demo permit and a building permit for that lot. At one-twenty Quincy, the county has closed the building permit, I've done a walk around. All the work is complete, uh, and the village will be closing the building permit, but will retain the bond. Because the contractor is still working outside to satisfy the county's settlement control inspector. So we'll hold the bond on that for a little while. Thirty-four twelve Taylor Street, we've spoken to the homeowner. They have hired a new design team and they'll be working on plans to improve their driveway situation. She has no idea when those plans will be ready. At thirty-four oh eight Taylor Street, uh, the village issued a stop work order last week. Construction has stopped and I understand that the homeowner will now be applying, hopefully to the county and the village for a building permit. And at thirty-four fifteen Taylor Street, the applicant applied for a permit to build a shed at the backyard. That permit, I think, has been issued today or tomorrow, and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you so much, Doug, I appreciate your patience. Um, uh, let's go to uh, community updates, um, in order of most controversial community engagement. And and thank you to the committee, also the election committee and Michael, um, for a really fantastic event yesterday.
And we are now officially known as like, it's a fun bunch. Okay. So yesterday was a rousing success. And we're gonna do the same thing in a few more weeks with the Independence Day celebration, which. Michael and I are gonna start working on very soon. And AJ, the good humor man is gonna be back. Because he was really popular yesterday. And uh, that's it, we've got a lot of fun. And uh, that's it. We've got a lot of fun things to look forward to. Fourth of July and then the movies. We might be doing that more than just in, let you know, the Labor Day weekend.
Great. We are, you know, we are uh proposing an increase for the committee. So get planning, get moving.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, I see, yeah, I see. Okay, so let's just, let's just go through this and then um, uh, election, uh, George.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, kickstarting the same way. Uh, just a massive, massive thank you to Michael, to. Around the Community Engagement Committee. Um, massive thank you to the rest of my committee members on the Election Committee for the event yesterday. Um, it was a huge success from an election standpoint. We had a hundred and eight ballots dropped off yesterday, which is a considerable uh uptick over last year. Um, so we're very pleased with that. Um, we've also, the other update related to ballot returns is. Um, we've been in contact with Electech and Michael can correct me on this, but I think we have around eighty-ish ballots have already gotten mailed back. To Electech, have already been received back. Um, including, we did a couple of controls with me and Eric Shaw's ballots, both which were mailed Monday and are back with the vendors as of today. So we're uh hopefully gonna see continued pretty efficient um ballot return throughout this process. But this is a reminder to everyone, um, ballots can be mailed so that they arrive at the vendor no later than. May twenty-third at five P M. That is our deadline for ballot receipt. So just reminding everyone, if you did not have the chance to drop your ballot off yesterday, you still have time. Stick it in the mail, um, as long as it's there by the twenty-third, it uh, that the deadline. So um, just an update for everyone on that front. Um. Other big uh upcoming items, the reminder, the eighteenth is the deadline for people to be added to the voter roll. We had a couple of people has to be added yesterday at the um, who are new residents, has to be added uh during the event yesterday. So we've gone ahead and added that. Um, but if you have any new neighbors, anyone who's just turning eighteen, anyone just moving into your house. Please remember, um, you have until the eighteenth to be added to the voter roll and we will get you a ballot as soon as possible. If you have. Um, if you need a replacement, um, reach out to us. Uh, we will do everything we can to get you one as soon as possible. I know we've gotten some requests coming in. Uh, over the last week since the ballots started arriving last Friday. Um, that we've got some requests that have come in. We're transmitting those over to Electech to get new ballots sent out. Um, if for whatever reason you requested a new ballot and the original ballot that was mailed to you shows up, it got held up for a day or two. Just reach out to us. We'll figure it out. We'll make sure that you're uh taking care of and voting the right one and there's no issues on the back end. Just if it shows up, let us know and we'll figure out the best uh path forward. If you need a replacement, reach out, let us know and we will, we will get something sent over to you. Um, vote counting will be May twenty-four. Um, just like the last few years, that's gonna be done on Zoom with Electech. Uh, the candidates and or their, or sorry, candidates or their designated observers will all be there. Uh, you're on page. It is open to the public, but is not open for public comment during that section. So um, anyone is able to dial in and observe, but there's no public comment section on that. But there will be a Zoom link that will be sent around as we get, also in getting that set up. One thing that is in the packet for tonight is, under the election plan, the council has to give us a thumbs up on our vote counting procedures. And we did submit those. A, I can tell you the process for taking those was we took vote counting procedures that were approved last year. And we changed the dates and we uh to make sure that it reflects that it was happening on the twenty-fourth. And we updated the language around curing to reflect this year's plan relating to unsigned ballots. And last year, I think the plan said twenty-four hours for curing. This year it says reasonable period of time. So the plan was updated to fix that. Other than that, the only thing we fixed was the dates. Um, but so that is the uh, just the step by step that we walked through on vote counting night. Um, it just kind of helps provide illumination for anyone as to what uh, what the steps that are followed when we hop on the. Hop on the call with Electech on vote counting night, which again is the twenty-four. Um, I think that is it for major election committee updates. Um, but again, uh, just a huge thank you to everyone uh for the event yesterday. That was. Um, fantastic. I know how many people enjoyed uh the ability to come by and drop off their ballots and also enjoy some of the celebration on the sidewalk. So uh, thank you uh to everyone for pulling that off. Um, and yeah.
And um, George, correct me if I'm wrong, the council is supposed to vote on this and this is page nineteen of the packet in front of you.
Yeah, and I I I had a chance to briefly compare and I I I noted only the date changes and that that exact reference is during. Twenty-four hours versus now reasonable time. So if if we, someone wants to move to uh approve, um. Okay, who, Susan moves, who would like to second?
I'll be delighted to second.
Second, so all favor say aye. Aye, unanimous. Okay. Thanks, George. We approved you.
Um, thank you so much.
Alright, thanks so much, George.
Election team, you are magnificent. Thank you. I'm, of course, I'm biased because we're.
Yeah, um, ethics, Laurie, please.
Senator before our question, I just uh done for reminder that we um submitted some questions at the last meeting. And um, we are hoping to receive some responses to this.
Okay.
Um, other than that, we will be working on our end of year report, um, which will present um at the June meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Um, I I think, and I apologize, Doug, if your hand was up during the building administrators' report. Um, I know that you've been in touch with uh with Katie and Michael and and others possibly on the on the council as well. If you have a a a comment you want to make uh based on the building administrators' report, please unmute yourself. Um, and uh, go for it.
Uh, thank you, Andrew, and thanks everybody uh for just letting me um make a comment for a minute. I I wanted to first see clarification. Doug Lowmeyer in his report just now mentioned thirty-four seventeen Cummings two times. But did not mention thirty-four nineteen. So I just wanted to clarify. What the update, which which part of his update applied to thirty-four nineteen? I've read the agenda packet online. Uh, I just want to, presuming that that was prepared in advance of this meeting. So it's not clear to me whether the report as delivered just now um included any changes. So if he's, if Doug is still on, could you clarify again?
Uh, our Doug isn't on, but um Doug, this is Michael and I can answer that question. The the permits were um some um issued this week for thirty-four nineteen. And that includes a demolition permit as well as the building permit, dumpster permit and a portable toilet permit. Um. They are, um, they started demo this week. Um, I asked them to pause that until they put up the tree protection fencing. For the tree in the front, which is a village tree. We haven't issued the permits yet for thirty-four seventeen Cummings. As there's not a house there, so there's no demo needed, but we will before they was our, that construction.
Thirty-four nineteen seems to be, is flat, right?
Uh, they started taking it down, um, and they will probably be starting back up again tomorrow.
Okay.
We we issued no parking for tomorrow because they're delivering some construction materials to that address.
Um, uh, thanks, Michael. Let me just, let me just note, as as I've commuted, communicated to some of you before, that the site plan. Uh, notes that tree protection measures are required. Uh, when they put up the fencing around the site, uh, I was an eyewitness. They did not use tree protection measures. They did no root pruning at all. Uh, they um uh entered the uh, the root zone of of the very large tulip poplar on our property. I've mentioned this to Karen, to the village, to the council many times since January. I would have assumed that, you know, care would have been taken. Uh, in addition, when they put in the fencing around the property, uh, they. Uh, without asking or with warning, but while the developer was present, uh, were on our property, which is fine. I would have not had a problem with that. Um, they ripped up grass several feet on our side from the property line, which was not necessary. Uh, also, not a big deal. They uh acknowledged that they had had done so. But uh, there was no effort to remediate, uh, no apology, nothing. It was a very simple thing that could have been. Um, uh, addressed. We have had a consulting arborist who has indicated. That that very large tulip poplar very close to the property line on our side is at. Who has studied the site plan and uh in his professional opinion. Um, uh, indicated that the construction will render it at, in his words, high risk for total tree failure. Um, uh, again, uh, even the developers own arborist. Um, indicated that there would be um twenty-five percent of the roots um destroyed, which is significant destruction. Again, uh, no action taken by the developer to to address that. Um, so, and and you know, which was surprising, would have expected, would have hoped for at least. You know, a phone call or a proposal, say, look, we we can remove and replace your tree. Um, it would would have been in a very simple uh situation here. But right now, we're in a situation where we have documented and communicated that's um construction on one site. Uh, cannot, uh, if it proceeds according to plan, will in uh damage property on an abutting site. And create a safety hazard and also affect sediment control and stormwater management. And so, um, I I'd like to ask, uh, uh, just as a general question. Um, what is the rationale or authority for the um village to. Uh, approve a permit for construction that it knows ex ante will cause property damage on a budding property?
It's a challenge. Uh, when I I was chairing a tree committee ten years ago or so, eight years ago. And this question came up all the time and uh the village has no authority on that kind of situation. Unless it affects, as you suggest, stormwater, uh, drainage or or sediment. That uh, the the roots going across another property, unfortunately, we don't have any. The the village has no authority over and I believe the county has no authority over. It doesn't appear in the uh, uh, the uh building applications. It's not something that the county reviews. Uh, this is something that's really between neighbors. Unless I'm wrong about any of this. Uh, Ron might have a different view or Michael, if you have a different view, different understanding?
If I could just chime in real briefly, and I know Joel had experience uh with a tree on his property that was impacted by a driveway that was being. Considered to be built uh along the his property line. Um, and I I think Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, it was basically ended up having to be a conversation between you and the developer, the owner. Of that property um with with the expert opinion that you that you received from from your arborist. Um, but but I don't know to what extent at that point the council was able to weigh in. I mean, we can weigh in with developers and to say. Be be a good citizen here in our community, but if it's not in in part of our, our, you know, it's hard for us to to tell a. Property owner what to do with a tree on the, or or you know, how to to proceed if it impacts a tree that's on their property.
And one point of clarity, it it's the county that issued the sediment control and and um stormwater management. So that's not even us and we met with them and Doug, you were there. Um, and he told me, the county, you know, inspector told me, they don't consider trees in their plans either. Either for stormwater or for sediment control. Um, they approve their plans based on other factors, but they don't consider trees there, so.
Joel, you can chime in?
Yeah, uh, Doug, I'm so sorry you're going through this. I went through the same exact thing. Um, you know, the research that I did at the time showed that uh your neighbor is allowed to prune the roots of the tree. So long as they don't kill your tree. Um, but it is a private, you know, what I understood at the time was that it is a private matter between the two property owners. So, you know, hopefully you're able to resolve it amicably, but if not, you know, I I think, you know, not to give illegal advice. What I was told at the time was that uh I would need to send a demand letter. That would be the only other option to try to stop it.
Um, yeah, thanks, Joel. I would just, I would just say that, um, you know, the developer has had a number of opportunities through a number of. Uh, uh, inner interactions to to propose a, you know, a solution. Hasn't uh, you know, uh, uh, demonstrated that a good citizenship, as as I mentioned. And the request of of the council and the and the village was to uh not to uh to stop. The construction, but to allow time in the issuing of permits in order for a resolution to uh. Um, to to be made. And again, the resolution is quite simple. It's remove and replace the tree. Um, and uh, uh, and it's 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 a little um, uh, mind boggling to me, a little in baffling as to. Uh, why that very simple solution uh would not be proposed, given the adverse reputational costs. Uh, and but but seeing the, it just in the last week and a half. The way the project has proceeded with the site plan as approved by the county and now the village, which calls for general pre. It has on it general tree protection measures. And as I've indicated and can document, they did not do that. So they were not um acting in compliance with their own site plan. And the other steps that 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 they've taken on the property does not augur well for how uh either this will proceed. Or um how maybe other projects in the village would. So, you know, the request was. Um, uh, not to stop, but for the village acknowledging the interests of 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 a resident. Um, to uh, to just simply come, you know, come to a very simple and quite frankly, reasonable resolution. A little bit of time um uh before issuing um the permits. Um, so uh, I I'd like to uh to just raise that issue for uh, for for consideration. Um, however you may see it.
And I also, I visited Doug's uh property and the tree, the top of tree is very close to Doug's home. And so he is concerned that if there is root damage, what that would mean to the tree and then what, what danger that could pose to his home. So this is, it goes on beyond issues.
Yeah, I think that was a similar issue that uh concern that Joel had at the time.
Hmm.
Um, Ron, anything to add to the conversation here?
Some things that the village council might consider. It it's additional cost and burden to the village, but some other towns have found it appropriate to retain a arborist. To help review building permit applications and to impose specific tree protection measures. This would require amendment to your ordinance, but it's something to consider. Town of Somerset does it, Town of Chevy Chase and. And some others, I believe. So then if a specific requirement of a tree protection plan. That is imposed as a condition of the permit were violated, then the village would be in the position to take enforcement action.
And our current tree protection um enforcement is for right of way, trees are right of way.
That's correct.
But but also um a neighboring tree on private property or not, so, no, okay.
What Doug's referring to is the county's um stamped site plan includes notes on it about what's supposed to happen with different trees. Including tree protections in certain areas.
For this, for this specific tree, as well as, as well as on our property, as which is noted on that site plan. It said, it has a picture, has a drawing of our tree and it has a note next to that saying the developer must take tree protection mess, measures. And I notified the village and the county that they had not done so when digging the fence line around the property, which comes close to the tree. And knowing that there was that non-compliance, the village um. Uh, issued, issued the the permit. The, and the site plan shows us, uh, has a similar note for another tree. Uh, at at the front of our property as as well. It's a, it's a gorgeous uh red maple that everybody going down Cummings comments on. Um, and so that now totally avoidable, frankly, on the developer's part. If they, and and also if they had complied with their own site plan. Um, um, and and now uh, there's some damage has already uh been done. And what my point is, is that um the village and the village council had this information when they uh uh approved, issued the permits. But let me. Issued the permits, but let me ask this question, if I had had a structure on my property near the property line. And it was known that the. That the construction site next door, that the plan called for the destruction of. That structure. And this was known prior to the the approval of the permits. By what authority would the village have approved those permits? Because that's what we have here is we have property, you know, in one sense, yes, it's a tree and frankly. You know, that's it's a concern, but a tree can be removed, replaced, but let's just, it it at a certain level, it is property. With an appraised value, and then there is value of that property, that item, that tree to the community, but it is in one sense, it is property. So what is the, by what authority does the village have to approve a construction plan on one site? That we know will cause property damage on a budding property.
Let's let me, Ron, yeah, Ron will go, this has come up before.
And a building permit applicant does not have a right to do damage to neighboring properties. If an applicant proposed to demolish a neighbor's house, of course, that permit would not be issued. That permission couldn't be given as a matter of law. I don't think the village knew here that the tree was going to be damaged.
Well, it was roots on their side of the property, Ron, so. I mean, it would, the the house is being built eight feet from that side property line. The tree is like two feet on the other property, so it's, I mean, we we knew, we know it's very close quarters and. There's there's a debate of whether that tree is going to survive or not and. I mean, I mean, Doug, I I met with you the other morning and and and, you know, talked out the different scenarios and likelihoods and. You know, I I just heard you say here on this call that, you know, the the solutions is eat seems easy or obvious to you. And that's to replace and repl- replant.
And for that, for that developer to bear the costs, correct?
Well, I'm sure that's what Doug would want, yes, I I I'm happy to facilitate that. You know, conversation between you and the developer, you know, you you. That that ask seems completely reasonable from my perspective, and it seems that the developer would would. Be inclined to do the same thing.
Let me, thank you, Michael, let me just say that that the, as I said, there are multiple, multiple interactions with the developer in which. They they had a number of opportunities to propose a solution. This is not my ass, right? This is, and this, the the developer, if the developer proposes this, we can have a re- reasonable conversation. But I think this may sound just like semantics, but I think we have to get, be very clear here into in, and and this goes to my point about. Protecting residents' interest, the inch, this, the developer here is. Is the, is interposing, is is coming in to our residence property, so there is a. Our dynamic here that we have to be very clear of, clear about and and maintain aligned. This does, residents are not, should not be put in a position where they have to ask something of a developer. It is the developer who is coming in seeking to develop and needs to comply, needs to acknowledge. Interest and to seek permission, so the developer may have an ask. Of of me and and we can have a reasonable conversation. I I'm I'm, you know, the this is, it's it's very easy if we. It's important to use the right language here because there's a mindset here that particularly for a village council representing. Village interests and residents and 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 the village itself and village management. Representing village interests, we just have to be very clear here that of who appropriately should be doing the asking here.
And and on that site plan, they they indicated they would facilitate tree protection on that particular tree.
On that particular tree and another tree and 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 it was on that condition that the. County approved it.
Yeah, and and so they broke ground or they started the demolishing part without having done so, without having protected either tree.
Not only without having done so, but after I was on a call. With the developer and the developer's arborist and the developer's site manager. Where the developer's arborist said that true tree, root pruning. Would be necessary. And and that was in response to even a question I had asked. And 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 where he cited that as as a general tree protection measure. And and even after hearing that, they went forward and did not do root pruning.
The county, Mr. Grobe, to ask if the county would enforce that tree protection plan?
I have notified the county, yes.
Did you get a response? I was, I'm just curious as to what the county's response would be. Because they would have the authority to issue a stop work order.
As would we? Okay, so this is, so you know, I'm I'm always eager, and I know Michael is too, when our developers, when we have the jurisdiction to issue stop work orders. When they, when they want to foul, but it was indicated that we can't on this because it's a private tree. So it is in the county's jurisdiction to issue a stop work order. So I'm I'm sorry, did you, so you have not heard back from the counties, what you just answered to Ron, is that right, Seth?
Yes, that's correct. I have, I'm waiting to hear back from the county.
Okay, okay. I just want to pick up on one thing that Ron had mentioned earlier. When we were looking at things that Martin's addition might do to protect private trees. We looked at the experience of our neighboring jurisdictions that did have licensing procedures. And what we found is that they actually saved very few trees. There would be a proposal to, you you had to get approval to take down a tree. Most of the time, the, and this was a tree on the developer's own property, not a neighbor. The, when it was not a, most of the time, they said, you can, you can take down the tree. The few times the various tree committees said, no, you can't, it was appealed, on appeal, they allowed it to come down. By our count, they save something like the, all the neighborhood district districts. Over about a ten year period, save perhaps three or four trees. And when we looked at that, we thought it just wasn't worthwhile to engage in that kind of licensing procedure. We did not face and they didn't, no one discussed a neighboring tree, the effect on neighboring tree, so that's.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I I appreciate your allowing me to speak and. And and for you all taking so much time and and participating in in the conversation.
Doug, to be continued, okay, I'm just saying, I know that Michael's been in touch and others, so so let's continue to 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 be in touch here on this. Because even if we don't have jurisdiction, we can still have conversations with the developer.
Mister Chairman, if I could just note for Mister Grob's benefit. You may already know Mister Grob, but on the Department of Permitting Services website, you can find. A staff directory and often if you call a site plan inspector, they'll pick up the phone. So you might be worth trying.
I appreciate that, Ron, thank you very much.
Sure, okay. Andrew, I just wanted to make a quick comment and Miss Grob, I I wanna just, Doug, I wanna. Just share a couple thoughts, first of all, just in terms of to summarize what I've heard and I I think some things because. You created a voice here and and we're taking this seriously, not just for your situation, but obviously this is something that will recur. So we're going to be looking into the enforcement matters, of course. But also, I thought Ron's suggestion and and we can take this up in the closed session around. Perhaps amendments or looking at the code around the arborist piece, which I thought is a great suggestion, and again, we can get into details. Is it something that is a case by case, so it doesn't have to be an added cost for every situation, but where there could be a possibility? And I do want to just add a private note of understanding how. Really challenging this is because I know my in-laws face this. They live in North Gaithersburg and it was terrible, it was, it was, they had a a a property that was adjacent to them. And there is a a very large tree, clearly it was distressed and it caused them great, great anxiety. Because of the idea that every time when there's a storm, they thought it was going to fall on their house. Now, if there is a bit of of irony, one of the big storms recently, when it came through, it actually fell on their house. The other house that had the tree, but I think just putting this out there is understanding this, we'll go through that. And then again, in closed session, maybe some things that aren't legal. Legally enforceable, what I mean, and but the idea that if we could even send a letter. On our letterhead that would just suggest something, but again, knowing it doesn't have legal enforcement, but maybe there's some weight there. Recognizing that, you know, again, it would be in the best interest for safety, so with that, I want to turn it over to you.
Send that information to us, what you were trying to put into the.
This is the residential inspection manager's phone number, but I can't get my camera to work.
Yeah, send it to Michael, Michael will do it to Doug.
Thank you, and on on that point, I thank you for the point about the tree on the on the neighboring property. I will say that in, at the residents' meeting on the construction in March, I won't belabor this point, but. When I shared all of these concerns in great detail on the record, you can go back and listen to the recording as well as in subsequent conversations with the developer. At that meeting on the recording, she said that she understood very well this issue because there was. And it had, I believe she said it was the same kind of tree, tulip popular tree that fell on her parents' house, and she really, really understood the issue. So I all the more am baffled as to why there has been no proposal or even effort to address the issue. So again, I appreciate your time and 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 responsiveness, thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Doug, and we'll we'll remain in touch, so let's let us move on to the budget and. I will hand this conversation, are you gonna start us off?
Yeah, I'll start things off. This is the same budget that. Appeared a a month or last month, three weeks ago, we have not changed it. So there's been plenty of time for people, council members and residents to look at it. We are increasing, we are reducing the property tax from five cents per hundred of assessed value down to two cents. And we are moving the personal property tax to zero. The, we are increasing expenditures for community events, as I had mentioned earlier. And for the election, our our contractors' costs have gone up. Now, we are proposing for other. Increases or services that I think we will need a separate vote on for each of these. And let me just go through them, composting, we are proposing, as was suggested by our local senator. The increased, I think it was. Proposing compliment for all households that requested at a projected cause, and it's purely projected. Of roughly twenty-three thousand dollars. Sidewalk snow shoveling on request, and this depends totally on how much snow we get. But roughly four thousand dollars per storm. Increased managerial support primarily to help with the various capital improvement projects. Dealing with the state highway administration, utilities, county and so on, and the various projects we have coming up. And senior support to provide. Services to seniors who requested for help in aging in place. This would be with the local organization. And that would be capped at six thousand dollars as a trial, as a prototype right now. So with that, do we want to move to. Going on each one of these separately, or are there other questions I have?
I I'm not sure how we've done this in the past.
Usually we voted on the whole budget, but we, but since these are four new. Four new services, I think it might be appropriate to go through them one by one.
I I'm happy to do that, for folks to be on the record on on these. Maybe maybe we start with the with with the managerial support. Increase in the budget, which I think, having having done a month and a half stint and having seen. Michael's workload, I'm very supportive of, I think it'll it will increase productivity here and 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 getting things done. And 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 take some burden off of Michael's day to day, so if if.
I will move to.
Because I do know that we've had some resume comments about, is it necessary and things? I just want to add, and again, this, for someone who works in federal government and we deal with a lot of contractors. And especially on particular projects that that have a particular technical pieces and having an opportunity to speak to Michael. And understanding that we are really going to be getting into some, you know, pretty significant. Project related work, including construction and other pieces that really, this is not only a reasonable expense. When you look at it as a percentage of the overall budget and what we're intending on spending. But also really as a necessary expense, because again, it really extends the arm and muscle. Of Michael, who's the manager is dealing with a lot, and these do require, in my humble opinion, a bit more of that technical expertise. Which is exactly why you can bring someone on in in this capacity, so I just want to address that in a way where I know that some folks have. You know, said, really, we may not need this expense, but I want to share that I I I understand that, but I think this is an absolute necessity.
That reminds me, other, there are some other resident comments to say, well, section three and section five don't have. These kinds of adjunct or supportive staff. But I would like to say that we are not section three or section five, we have chosen to provide a broader range of services to the community. And having made that decision, we have our office here, we don't operate out of somebody's backyard or basement or attic office. We have our own offices here, we choose to provide a broader range of services. And so if we were going to do that, then I think we need the staff to.
Yeah, and 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 we have the, we have. And even with the looming, as as the center said, possibility of.
I'm glad that Jeff Wolfsberger says that, because I have been saying that practically every meeting.
You say it every year and. Because it's cyclical. Yeah, so so let's vote on this, so who would like to move?
I will move to.
Arthur moves the second.
I will.
Jeff will second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous.
Okay, moving on.
So moving on, moving on to composting. And and I had a helpful conversation from a resident who reached out that there are many other games in town, including veteran owned composting company. Given the price tag would have to go to an RFP anyway, so I I think, I think this is a. And and so this price, the this dollar amount does not mean that that's what we're necessarily going to spend, but this is based on initial conversations. With the existing vendor to some of the homes.
Doing it privately.
So anyone want to move on on the composting? Susan moves second?
I I know you're about to, but I just want to say, I just, again, this is one of those where I know that we did a survey. It wasn't like this overly strong majority. You know, our family, we don't use this, but you know, with with the idea that I think there there's clearly those who, you know, really see this. As an essential service and we'll see how it goes.
And I don't currently use it, but I I just keep hearing about it and I'm intrigued, so that's why I'm lending my support.
So all in favor, say aye, aye, okay, unanimous. The the sidewalk snow shoveling, I think this is great, we've had many conversations. I'm I'm strongly in favor of it, we have the funds, it it'll help community members that are in need for this kind of assistance. It's a safety matter as well, not just for the resident living there, but for residents and others passing through. So I think this is, this is critically important, for hopefully some more, for my children at least, robust winters in the future.
And let me, oh, sorry, I was trying to get you before you raised the motion. I know, again, we talked about this extensively, and this is not the time we have to do this, but remind, remind me, Parker or whoever. We talked about the idea of how we're gonna do a criteria or how we're gonna allocate this, that, that's to be deep, okay?
Well, I'll request, okay.
Yeah.
And all of these will require building a program. It's not gonna go live on, on July one. It, it's gonna take, it's gonna take. Building a program and this one specifically will be rolled into our larger snow shoveling, snow plowing contract, so. Which is already coming up due this summer anyways, so.
Okay, when, when we say pilot, we'll, we'll assess, because again, I, I wanna, you know, be very cognizant of what other, there are some residents who strongly. Oppose the idea of doing something that would be an entitlement, that would be in perpetuity, but I think there hasn't been enough. Of. I don't want to use the word outright, but there's been enough of demand. We saw it in the public safety survey, we've seen it also in the annual survey that. This is, this is absolutely something that residents would like and we're gonna, we're gonna try it and then we'll reassess.
Right, and, and we're here to provide service and um, so in terms of the, 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 you know, the term entitlement. Um, I, I, I use that a lot with my kids. They, they seem to feel entitled, X, Y, and Z. I think this is more of like a, a need and a benefit of being a resident of Martin's addition, so um, who'd like to move?
I will, please.
Who'd like to second?
I will.
Jeff seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now that we passed that, I just mentioned the last time we did.
But we haven't passed the whole budget yet.
This was back uh, around two thousand and ten. Uh. Just before I got on the council, there was, we shoveled every, all the, all the uh sidewalks. And there was a big snowstorm and the snow shovel, they probably, the sidewalk shoveling cost more than the roads.
And we, we heard from a resident that uh, the July fourth party was not funded um, in subsequent years because. Um, we, the community was told that there weren't funds for the July fourth.
Well, there wasn't. In fact, that's when, as Jeff mentioned, Wallstricker. The uh, budgets collapsed.
Right.
After the reset, like we said. Uh, and money just disappeared.
Yeah.
So, we, we're not funding.
Yeah.
The Fourth of July.
Okay.
But, um, moving on.
Uh, moving on to, to uh, a, 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 um, a line item here that has been discussed now for. Uh, the past year and that's the aging in place. Um, I, I was of the opinion that we should not pick winners and losers in the community. I did have a lengthy conversation yesterday at the sidewalk. With, with uh, um, the uh, the two individuals who were seated at the table. Um, they did bring one thing to my attention that I was not aware, is that Chevy Chase at Home is only with this zip code. It's not a, if I, I didn't, I didn't know that, you know, because there are other.
There are, you know, there are over, there are about thirty such.
Yeah.
Organization in the county, this town county.
Did you discuss with them whether they have extended scholarships?
I didn't, I did not discuss it, but they, they mentioned to me that um. I don't know if it's the village or section three, I don't recall, but they started a pilot there and they've increased it since.
So the counter to the change, yeah, uh, allocate a straight. Uh, amount, it's not purp, it's not for individuals, they just give them a specific amount.
Yeah.
About every year, and it's been going up over the years.
Because of our.
No, we cannot do that. We are prohibited from doing that because.
Oh, giving the, the organization the money is what they do.
Right, they give the organization.
Yeah.
And then the organization supports people from the.
This, this would be, right, these would be scholarships here. We'd have to educate our residents as to the availability of these passes so that. They could take advantage of it. So I, I, yeah, so um, I, I welcome any additional.
Comments from, and cliches from a year ago about opening a can of worms or picking winners and losers or a slippery.
Uh, yeah, I. What are we slippery spoken to?
The concern is if we're saying we can do a workaround to use. Um. Taxpayer dollars for a nonprofit, and I readily, you know, endorse CC at home. Um. But I think it, it's still a nonprofit.
Yes, it is, yeah, it is.
Um.
Yeah.
We're saying we can do that because it's for a health benefit and we.
No, it, it would be for specific services to identify individuals.
Right, I understand, but Ron said that we would be empowered. Ron can explain perhaps, but um. There have been a number of residents who have said, if we do that, then they will propose that we pay for their. CCRA membership. Or.
Their what, their what members?
Chevy Chase Recreation Association, uh, on it as a health benefit.
Yeah.
Um, that there are any number of nonprofits.
Just, I'm saying that, I would, here's my response, and then let me hear from Ron. First, this is not a charitable contribution like giving to the Red Cross. It would be more like if the Red Cross came up here and gave CPR lessons. And wanted a hundred fifty dollars, that will do that for a hundred fifty dollar fee. That would not be a contribution to the Red Cross to go and do good things around the world. It would be for specific services. Uh, identifiable, it would be payment for services. That is not a general charitable contribution. On the slippery slope argument, I would say, if people have good ideas. For services that the village should provide, bring them forward. There, we've discussed them. It's not a slippery slope, it's a recommendation. Uh, that people can make, and we would hear it and listen to it and decide on its merits. So, we're not slippery sloping here, uh, and what was the other phrase?
That's what I, that's what I recall was the, the, the conversation we had.
Right, it, it would be for specific services, for specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, that if, if waste management converted to five oh one C three. And they were picking up our garbage, the fact that they're charitable would not have an impact, you know?
No, but it's not a donation.
No, it's not a donate, we're not giving donation.
No, I understand, but, but residents, I have heard from a number of residents.
Yeah. Ron, tell us.
Okay, who's right and who's wrong?
No, where the, where the. Yeah, no, just literally speaking, if, if there are any concerns from your point of view.
I'm looking for a copy of our. Policy on charitable.
Exactly, it's, it's in the code, Ron.
It's twenty twelve, I think it's. It was.
It says we do not give to charities.
Yes, and. Can you tell me a little more about how the, the funding would be provided? I know I've given you. An opinion previously about a gr, grant program would be permissible.
Right, well, would be a grant program.
But in, in, in the budget, how, how's it reflected?
Um.
I don't know, I don't.
It says aging in place, six thousand dollars.
And, and applicants or village residents would apply.
Right.
Well, so of course, again, the program hasn't been created yet, uh, so we could, you know.
Okay, yeah, so then we have, we have room to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so generally that's permissible because we can set it up as a grant program that is. One express power that municipalities have to provide public services. And I just make sure.
Yeah. Okay, okay, good.
I know, I just want to add that, I mean, a comment. So first of all, I know I've shared this in, in prior, um. Open meetings, but for someone who was raised by his grandparents and now just, I was in New York. With some dear relatives who helped raise me, who are now were recently discharged from the hospital and I was up there helping around the house. Um, I just say that again, I, I'm grateful. For the council to consider this, because personally it means a lot, but also as a council member and recognizing our constituents and recognizing. That quite frankly, this is a meeting edge demonstration program. That living in place. Aging in place is an issue that isn't just impacting VMA. Or Chevy Chase, but it, it's affecting the nation right now, truly, and I, I'm not trying to grandize, but really the reality is, I think. That uh, this is a remarkable opportunity for us. To try something, I recognize the other side entitlements and slippery slopes, but this is a very focused activity. It is a one-off, we're gonna collect data. And quite frankly, if it doesn't work or if there are concerns in terms of just the effectiveness of it. Well, guess what? We won't renew it. But I think that this is one of those examples of, quite frankly, good. Mean government that is saying, let's try it. Let's try something that is gonna really help folks who need it. And again, we'll collect data on it. If it doesn't work, or there are mixed signals of how it was implemented. Well, we'll go back and course correct, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you have to say. I grew up in a multi-generational household too. My family would have benefited from this, and there's a, there's a dignity, there's a respect to aid in place, and I think that this complements that, so I really appreciate things like that.
All right, and I must say, I, go ahead.
Please can you say, I like old people? I.
What are people like, just like that?
Famers over my thirty-six years here, and I um. Think it's great that there is a service such as this one. I think they do a lot of good. My concerns have to do with the government, um.
Yeah.
Interesting, and for the record, for someone whose family belongs to CCRA.
Mine did.
I would never vote. For the funds to support my CCRA or anything.
I, I, I must, I must say, I've, I've moved on this, like I've, I've, I've kind of initially had a, 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 an opinion here and, and I've. Um, watched uh, how my late father was able to stay in his home and, and, and had the luxury of staying in his home. Um, and I, I view that as something so important. Um, and I have a lot of neighbors who are living in their homes and I don't know if they're struggling or not. Um, but it's wonderful that they're, that they're living in their homes, and so I, I think we should try this out. That's my opinion. Um, and so if someone would like to move.
I would very much like to move.
Katie, second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Yeah, and opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
And respect that.
Good, okay, now we have to adopt the budget. Uh, and there is a, a thing here to uh.
Or I, I had one comment. It was very, uh, brief, um, uh, two bones. Well, one, and I'm sure like a lot of fellow council members and even residents, but I've had some, um. Pretty, you know. Good follow-up discussions with Michael on a couple of things and, and uh, specifically on uh, expenditures that we anticipate. And unplanned when it comes to, for example, flooding. Or other things that around walkability or safety, and you know, one of the things I commented was, well. Did we actually allocate enough? You know, and what happens if something comes up that we need more than what we're doing? And I just put on the table, Michael and everyone else, uh, you know, that I, I've discussed this with. Has made me feel very comfortable with the idea whether it's a super majority that. We may need to allocate or the reserves or things, so I just want to share that. We can't really predict, but we do know for a certainty. That these are major issues and, you know, we do fortunately have the reserves and I think that we're well prepared to make adjustments. That was one. The other, which is a little less, um, you know, a, a, a big. Ticket item, but I do want to put it out there. So I, I know that, again, one of the greatest. I think moments I've had on the council was when we unanimously approved in a very short period of time, the antisemitism. You know, signing on to that with other sections of Chevy Chase. And I put out there a little innocuous thing that. You know, I've, I've always believed it would be, really it would be wonderful if we could have like an intern or two. Within the village, you know, whether it's uh, uh, kids here of middle school or, or perhaps high school. Or perhaps even someone from out of town. I am not necessarily suggesting that we create a, a line item. You know, I was, I was thinking that perhaps a couple thousand dollars, but I do want to just put it out there that I think it's something. To consider and maybe as things go forward, as this thing gets some sea legs under it. The antisemitism and, and what we may do, that again, we could consider as a super majority that if it makes sense and we, if we issue something. Where there are some uh, uh. You know, kids, you know, middle school or would like to participate. I don't think they have to do it for free, and if it's minimum wage or something, just so they know their time is valued, I would like, I mean, I personally would, and I'm sure as a resident. You know, I would do it out of pocket anyway, but it might be just something to. But that's it, I am not making a motion that we add to the budget, I just want to put it out there, it might be something.
Something you consider.
Okay, okay, so, so, so uh, this budget ordinance adoption requires a public hearing, of course, and so before we can vote on the entire budget, we need to go to. Like any comments that the community might have. Um, so with that, I'm gonna, I'd like to call on Tiffany, Tiffany, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we turn one off to hopefully get the other one to work. Um. Well, thank you uh, for taking the comments. Uh, I will try and be brief, a few of them. A clarifying point for the news staff. Um, what I heard tonight was maybe slightly different than what I've heard in the past. Are you intending to bring on in a contract? Mechanism, a project manager for these distinct and temporary projects? Or are you intending to hire a new staff mem?
I can answer that, uh, this is Michael.
Well, that's your last phrase, but I think we could.
Tiffany, if you're still there, this is Michael, um.
I'm here.
The, the, the idea is to have um, additional flexibility with my staffing. And whether that's contract or a, a part-time employee, it definitely wouldn't, it's not enough money here in the budget. Um, it would be another part-time employee to help me manage some of these programs and projects. Um, again, I haven't created the actual program yet, I haven't written the job description, um, but just, just. Being here for six months now, um, and recognizing, I think the council recognizes. Um, as our votes to show that, that we do have some needs for some additional, additional. Capabilities and flexibility with our, with our staffing.
Okay, I think, um, just as somebody with a background of requirements writing, um. Difference in how you approach this, and I think having clarity on how you approach it might assuage at least. Concerns that I'm aware of, concerns that I have shared, um, regarding, you know, hiring a project manager with. A specific background experience and skill set is different than bringing on. A part-time staffer who doesn't have that experience, so um. Contract versus staff. Uh, the second thing, um. You know, Chevy Chase at Home, I uh, I have said before, I think this is a slippery slope. I think it's. Um, you know, as Susan's example of CCRA, um, you could say those are specific. Could be specific benefits to specific residents and you could run a grant program, uh, just, Andrew, for your awareness, they serve only. Residents of two zero eight one five as well, so just. One zip code, um.
Slightly different mission, but go ahead.
It's slightly different mission, but there, you know, there are seniors that, that use CCRA for, you know, their health and wellness. Um, so again, you know, other nonprofits can come forward or other residents, you know, younger, older can come forward and ask for the support. Um. And then, you know, since you've opened the door for a grant program, um. It is not noted as part of the budget, but I'm gonna put it out there now, you know, my, my questions around. A uh, rebate that could be a tax relief grant program, Arthur, I read your documents. Um, you know, if, if the village has the authority to create and run a grant program. For Chevy Chase at Home, I do not, I'm not aware of a difference in legal authority. For the village to not be able to create and run a grant program for tax relief to its own residents. Um, and I would just note as a factual matter. Uh, section five is two-thirds of the size of Martin's additions, not fifty percent.
No, uh. Tiffany, uh, that was very carefully chosen wording, uh. Using those numbers, Martin's addition is fifty percent bigger. They're two-thirds the size, we're fifty percent bigger. Uh, I purposely chose which was the numerator and which was the denominator.
Arthur, they have, according to their red book, they have two hundred and twenty-seven homes and we have three hundred and twenty-six.
Uh, well, according to, they have six hundred residents, we have about a thousand residents. Uh, that is fifty, we're fifty.
Right, but you were talking about a tax rebate program that was discussed in the context of individual residences, not residents.
I wasn't, I didn't have a distribution, distribution mechanism in mind. I was looking at total. Uh, we can get into that, but let's, let's, okay.
Thank you for uh, listening to my comments on the budget.
We, this is continued long, our, our long sidewalk discussions that have gone over the last few years. And we don't have to continue this right now, Tiffany. But thank you. Thanks Tiffany. Marty?
Hi there, everyone. I, Arthur, I want to thank you for all your work on the budget and I really want to thank the entire council. For voting in favor of the snow shoveling program, the Cherry Chase at Home program, the composting and especially. The proposal to give Michael the flexibility to hire. Project manager, something that, that I think a lot of us have done professionally in our jobs. You've got a complex technical project, you hire a project manager, Michael. I don't want you pulling your hair out over this stuff. Speak up. And I think that people like Joe Kudrow will have good recommendations, you know, for folks who can help supervise the. Day-to-day management of the sidewalk. On Brookville Road, for example. That's not something that you should have to spend all of your time on. Um, and it's probably just, you know, a part-time contract, maybe ten, twenty hours a week depending on the workload, but. I am really, really glad that the council has approved that flexibility for you, Michael. I support this budget. And Arthur, I thank you for putting it together. So kudos and thank you to the council on all counts.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, um, I think it's time unless anyone on the council has a comment.
I just, I'll make this brief. I just wanna, uh, first of all, I'll just say, you know, uh, appreciate the resident comments, Marty. Appreciate all the positive uh, pieces of vibes. And Tiffany, I do want to just share, um, and I hope it was reflected a little bit in some of my comments, but. You know, uh, you, you're, you're thoughtful, um. Messaging and thoughtful outreach really, uh, you know, gave. Pause and a lot of consideration on some of these points. So again, I'm gonna appreciate and acknowledge the time that you took to reach out and share those with us. So that, that's really.
Thank you. Um, we have one more comment and then we'll go to a vote. Lynn, please uh, unmute yourself.
Here I am, and I guess you can maybe see me, I don't know.
Thank you.
Eh, anyway, uh. On the, on the tree issue, uh, we, looking back at the past, at all the. New construction or expanded homes that have taken place over the years, we have lost a, a tremendous amount of tree canopy. And every time we lose one of those trees, we lose a sponge that soaks up surface water. Uh, and uh, there's a price paid for that. Would it not be possible to put something into our code? Uh, that when these developers come along. Uh, that especially the, the, the more mature trees. Uh, uh, they cannot just be easily replaced with a sapling because it's, it's gonna take twenty or thirty years for that sapling to get back to. What the big tree was doing with regard to absorbing water. So when the developer comes in, uh, let's try to get something into the code where that tree stays. Uh, and, 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 and it's mandatory that the developer protect the long-term health of that tree. Uh, it'll benefit the entire community, not just the next-door neighbor. Who, who's losing twenty-five percent of his root structure and then ultimately loses a tree and, and bears, has to bear the expense of pain to take it down. It, it, it's just unfair to the property owners and it's unfair entirely to the village of Mars addition. And, and the people who are suffering from, from flooding. They're just, uh, that's one item. Uh, you went through the budget items and um. I didn't hear that. I, I heard a four thousand dollar thing for snow shoveling. But I didn't hear, uh, I didn't hear, I think I heard six thousand dollars for aging in place. Um, and, and then you voted on compost. But there was no dollar amount thrown in for that. And was this, was this compost thing, was that for compost for the entire village? At, and, and the village is uh, footing the bill for it? And, and if so, what, what is the amount?
Lynn, what, Lynn Welly, on page twenty-five, there is a um, a detailed price of every program, including the composting and, and. And the snow shoveling.
Snow shoveling was a fifteen thousand. Um, Lynn, and, and again, you know, the, the, if we have uh, mega storms. The, the, the council meets, if we run out of funds and uh, requires a super majority to increase. Uh, the budget. So that's fifteen thousand. And the composting is twenty-two thousand eight hundred. That's estimated based on conversations we had with. The current vendor to many private homes here, but it would all depend on uh, how many residents. Participate. That's, that's, uh, and, and we want to give them the ability to, to benefit from, from, from these funds. Does that answer your question?
Yes, uh, page twenty-five of what?
Oh, of, of the uh. The, the agenda packet that was circulated. Uh, online or is on the website as well?
Oh, the, the, for this meeting?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had not opened it and, and I didn't know that those little details would be included uh, in the future. I'll. Try to uh, look through that first before I ask my stupid uninformed questions.
Not at all. Thank you, Lynn.
Neither stupid nor unimportant.
I was going back to the parking where Liz was carrying on earlier. I wondered if. If what the insurance company told her is just to get out of being responsible for the claim or in fact, that is state law.
I think, I think we're gonna do a little digging here. Um, uh, because I'm really curious. I think it's, it's. It's unbelievable that this will be the case. Um, some of the stuff, you know, some of the state laws and federal laws are. Hundreds of years old, I guess, you know, not that parking necessarily while with your carriage. Um, and backing up the horse. But uh, I think it's pretty remarkable that that could be a state law. So we're, we're gonna dig into that, Lynn.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you. Doug, final comment before we vote on the budget.
Yep, thanks. Um, just thank you, Lynn Welly, for raising that, the point about the trees and I'll just, just uh, add to one code to reinforce that. When we talk about removing and replacing those trees. The older uh, uh, sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old extremely tall trees is the ones that we, that I was discussing before. Um, that uh, uh, in, in some cases, they will not be able to be protected. And so when we are talking about replacement, we have to be very clear that. We're not talking, uh, and we shouldn't be talking about one and one-to-one replacement, uh, both in. Terms and, and not only and perhaps even, even less significantly in terms of the appraised value of those large trees, but because of the stormwater. And sediment control management uh, issue because this. Where um, this issue is not about a, a particular property or a particular resident or a particular tree. It, it has, as we all know, this issue has tremendous community impact. Cause the loss of those extremely large trees like ours, they significantly affect stormwater management. And they have, um, you know, tremendous, tremendous future community impact. And I think that is the angle. You know, earlier on, we were talking, the discussion focused on a relatively narrow kind of legalistic. Um, focus on the issues, but where the, the village has a role. Uh, even under the current ordinance is in the community impact, um, and the future impact and the general impact. And so, um, making sure that we are not locked into a, a, a one-for-one replacement. Scenario with a, you know, a six hundred dollar sapling replacing. Uh, a tree that has been there now for eighty years is, is really, really key as a general matter if we're talking about amending the, the code. So thanks, uh, Lynn for, for raising that issue.
I totally agree. And I just want to make two things before uh, we make the motion to uh, adopt. Couple of things. First, Doug, I, again, you say something that really goes straight to. The heart here is uh, recognizing on our own property where uh. Many uh, mature trees that have been taken down uh, by developers and have created a real. Um, difficult situations uh, with water management. And it gets back to the idea of, of this next point, which is, um. Again, it would have to go through a process and we still have no idea if it is something that we would embark on just yet under a new council. But you know, if we would modify the code and look at an arborist, when we look at the budget. You know, we do have some line items around tree maintenance and things, but that's where we would have to look at. You know, how, how something like that would, uh, would be either part of the existing budget or understanding if there's any new expense in that. But I just wanted to raise that, but raise it as a point that. You know, could be very important for residents and so that we would address that uh, in the time. And then another one, and I say this with all deference and great love. To Ron, our esteemed lawyer, but I did want to just ask a question. Perhaps Michael or, or who may be in the know, but the line item for legal expense, uh, legal, the fifty-five thousand. I just wanted to appreciate, is that designated to? Uh, uh, you know, a, you know, ju, for example, and again, I, this could be in a closed session, but is this just designated to? Attorney vault? Or is this the idea of what happens if there is an ethics? Issue and there's an investigation, we know there's no cap? Or what happens if we need other legal advice on particular technical issues? Like I remember there was something around the, the five G towers and things. So I just wanna appreciate, is this, is this like a, a? A bolt attorney fee or is this, there's some fungibility in this legal area?
Well, legal budget. We did look at, when we created this budget, Arthur and I looked at our year-to-date. And Arthur reports that, you know, with, with his treasurer reports on a regular basis, the year-to-date. So this is based off of this year's budget, which we're, we're doing fine or well under. Uh, this will accommodate for any legal fees that we can anticipate right now.
Got it. So it's, there's no, it's, it's fun, it's. For example.
We've had, we've taken, as you said, we've taken money from that for other, other.
That was, those are my, my any questions.
Okay, okay. So we need a budget resolution.
May, may I ask you?
Go ahead, uh, Ron.
Earlier, uh, Ron, Ron Bolt held up a phone number. Uh, could he just uh, share the last four numbers of that number, please?
We're, we're gonna send that information to, to Doug that, uh, that Ron identified for, for county purposes. If you would like that too, Lynn, we'll get that to you as well.
All right, all I need is the last four numbers.
Okay, all right. Um, budget resolution, Arthur. We, uh. We don't have a, an actual budget resolution here, but I will move. Uh, to uh, introduce a budget resolution to pass the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as. Uh, designated in the budget uh, proposal. Okay, I think that's good enough. We have a second? You have seconds? All in favor, say aye. Okay, now we need to pass the uh, real uh, property. There should be another one for the personal, we don't, there should be another one.
It's, it's, it's both in here.
Is there both in there?
Uh, it's one resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three. On page twenty-six of the packet. At the bottom, you can kind of see it's a little bit highlighted where the um.
Oh, okay, right. There's both of them.
Yes.
Right, got it. Okay. The resolutions approve levying a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions of section six dash two or three of the tax property article. Be annotated, go to Maryland as amended. So that's the, uh, right. I will move to introduce that resolution. Okay, we have a second? Two seconds. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Okay, I discussed this a little bit. I think we have. I think, I think we have in the past. Well, it's in the package. Yeah, yeah, I think we're good. So, but we can, with that, go to the treasurer's report. Fantastic, fantastic. Managers report. Dr. Sullen.
Okay. All right, I'm excited about that budget. I'm excited about the. The new um, spending over the next year and the programs that we're gonna create, those are new services. So that's, that's, that's the fun part of my job. So thank you. I have been here for six months as of Sunday, which is, which is also, which is also my birthday. So. Will be, will be. Yeah, yeah, Mother's Day. Um, I just have a few things to mention here. Really briefly, the report is in the packets. You can read it at your leisure. Um, our QuickBooks is this. Current QuickBooks arrangement is complicated and is expiring at the end of this month. So I took the initiative to. Talk to our accountants about other options. Um, and they recommended moving to an online QuickBooks twenty twenty-three platform. Um, that will end up saving us um, about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, a year.
And it's also less clunky and easier to use.
We, we basically pull three reports out of our accountants, um, out of our QuickBooks. And so we will be able to create those reports from scratch with our accountants. Um, we will have five online users, which is way more than we need. Um, and we don't, right now, we're paying for another I T service to have a remote desktop to get into it. Um, it's very, very complicated. This is gonna simplify things and it saves us a lot of money. So that's um, good news. I'm meeting with our G I S um, contractor next week. They're delivering the final G I S updates. Based off of comments that um, our village engineer and I made to the current map. I've also asked them to create a simplified, small printable map that we can put in the welcome bags and people can frame and put up on their walls. The maps that we have been giving out are, have handwriting on them and they're Xeroxed a hundred times and look really bad. So um. We're, we're improving that. Related to that, I've asked um, Aaron Burns, the assistant village manager to kind of create or revamp the program as far as welcoming. And, and tracking who is moving into the village. This will improve our communication lists, our voter roll creation every year. Um, our welcome bags, you know, I don't think those have really been reviewed. You know, we're putting a lot of paper in there. We're getting, you know, gift cards that aren't hard copy gift cards anymore. We could, we can, we could do a lot with that program and, and improve it. Um, I, there's reports that the, the newsletter used to have a lot more information about who is moving in or what houses were for sale. There's all those types of things that I would like to bring back. And, and it will, it will take work. So I'm, I'm assigning that to Aaron. So we're excited about that. Um, under buildings, um, Doug mentioned this earlier, but I did um, issue a stop work order this week. So you all should be aware of that on Taylor Street. Um, luckily I did get in contact with the owner and they are gonna go through the correct process now of submitting their, their plans for a screened-in back porch. So we're excited about that. And then um. The Cummings project at thirty-four seventeen and thirty-four nineteen has already been talked a lot about tonight, but um. Uh, that, those permits haven't issued for that demo. So that's, that's going forward as soon as they get their tree protection for this. Village's tree, which is on the right away in the front of the house. Unless they have that fence split up, then they're, they're good to go. So. Um, that's where that stands. Under maintenance, we had a scary situation where a tree started coming up, uprooted at one twenty Quincy this week. The arborist was very good and responded very quickly and came and took that tree down. Um, that's right outside of the development at one twenty Quincy. That's, that's almost done. So sad, sad story there. Um. We did send out a reminder to everyone to trim their bushes. This is off of the sightlines for corners out of the right away from. Away from roads, but also from sidewalks and from fire hydrants. It's something I added in there this year. Um, Andrew and Arthur and I got to witness them testing a fire hydrant on Thornapple. And Delfield and um, the bushes, you know, were growing in the way a little bit there. It wasn't impossible to open it. They were able to push the bushes out of the way. Yeah, but. Correct. Yeah, so um, so that was included in there and I think we might need to follow up with a couple of homeowners that, that still, you know, don't. Heat our, our reminder and let their bushes grow wild over the right of way. So that's in process. Um. We are making some repairs to the right-of-way grass on, on Turner Lane. Um, it's been pretty beat up for a while and cars drive over it and. So we are, um, go, go ahead and doing that. That's our landscaper. That has replaced all the flowers and around the shops and everything like that. That we took down ourselves to do all of that. Um, that's green and sweet. They're, they're great. And I actually met with them and, and reviewed the. Issues there on, on Turner. So we're excited about that. Under special projects, um, I included in the back of this packet, the R F P. And again, the village engineer Doug Lo Meyer created um, some conceptual sketches. That I, that I tacked onto the back of that R F P. Um, a lot of people are applying or, or asking questions about this R F P that's posted in several places in the state. Um, so we're expecting a competitive bidding process for that. So that's good. Um.
Sidewalk.
Brookville sidewalk. Um, we have been assigned a program manager at the State Highway Administration. Um, his name's Lamar. He seems very competent and has been around transit departments for a while. Uh, he came in and met with us with his team, uh, this week and Andrew and I were able to walk the entire sidewalk with the team. And they, we, we submitted a plan to them and they are currently preparing comments and, and edits. And a couple of points that are difficult or, um, but.
Waivers.
But, but, but we came away from that feeling very positive that, that they're gonna approve a plan. A, a slightly amended plan once we create it, but it sounds like they will approve it. On top of that, they will. Simultaneously start moving forward as far as issuing an MOU for reimbursement. So we will pay for it. And they will reimburse some portion of it. Um, so we're, we're moving forward with that as well. We're ex.
Yeah.
They're supposed to get their comments back to us next week.
Oh, really? You know, this is something where we, we, best case scenario, this is, this is happening summer, fall and, and, uh. And then, and based on Lamar and, and Quan was the other, um, highway, uh, state highway, uh, person. Um, this shouldn't take so long. This should not be a long project. Um, so.
From at least a.
Getting here took long, but.
Right.
Once, but, 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 but once it's approved and the MOU is signed, the actual.
Not to be a long project.
Yeah.
This is summer because there'll be less people.
About this for twenty, thirty years, I hear. So I mean, it's just, you know, we're hopefully in the, the home stretch here.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
They, 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 I think also reiterated that the fact that we're paying for it. Um, that we have the funds to do it is speeding this process up because if this was us trying to get on their top ten list or top twenty list. That we wouldn't, this, this will be, we'd be talking about this in ten, twenty years ago, uh, still. Yeah, so.
So we're very excited about that. Um. And once we do have a final plan in place, we'll share that. I don't think we're quite ready, quite there yet, but, um. We do have some conceptual ideas and it does include a, a crosswalk at. Uh, Bradley, a new crosswalk across, um, Brookville. So, um, we're moving forward with that as well. And.
But it's coming on crosswalks. We mentioned other locations as well. Um, again, not to slow down this part of the equation, but for awareness sake. And I think even residents today mentioned some of this, but this is a conversation we had earlier in the week.
I'm trying to keep us focused and on, on page because there's a lot of ideas and, well, how about a bike lane or how about?
Right.
How about making, how about making traffic one way? I've, we, we, we have, there's a lot of ideas out there. Right now, we're just gonna build a sidewalk. Um, so that's.
The traffic group will be, they will adjust with, once the comments, once we get their edits and.
They will revise according to the comments. Okay.
That's the plan. So.
Great.
Moving forward with that, um. The same thing with the, well, the different thing with the Taylor Street drainage study that we had. Um, we've provided some edits and comments to the. That, that, the, that firm that did that study for us and they're, they are preparing the final recommendation and final plan to us. So. We're waiting.
Now, we are working with the county on that.
That's the county, that's the county's storm drain and it would be on them to replace it. So we don't actually have a plan in place of what that timeline looks like yet. But we have, we're very close to having a plan and a recommendation. And once we have it, again, I'll share it with you all first.
The, well, the same thing you think, uh, happened that if we provide the money. This is again, they could, they will do it or can we hire our own contractors to do?
Again, I don't know the details yet. Um, right now, we're just finalizing our plan that then we would bring to the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when he can take a deep breath.
Right.
The conversation is about an engineering study for, for Quincy as well. That's, that's an additional item we've been talking about.
Yeah, additional storm drains or something else. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Um.
And you have that, you have that flexibility in the budget to.
Yes, there's, there's, um. A million and a half set aside for capital projects, um, in the budget that you just passed. So. We're feeling good about that and to one thing at a time. Let's get a new sidewalk. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Good. All right, we, uh, we are at the point where we have final, uh, resident comments. So, uh.
I can, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say one thing before you go into resident comments. I just wanted to make one, one, um, note. On the budget and I wanted to share this and, and it's, it's a matter of positivity of. Uh, I appreciate that this year we made some additions and the budget actually is, is going up. And I think it goes without saying that, again, I've, I've been a. Very effusive and, and deservedly so of authors. Uh, management over the years. And of course, it takes, it takes a village. I mean, it's, it's been tasked by other councils, but I mean, the. Um, the way the fiscal management. And that we are in such a position to do this and understanding when the auditors come in and, you know, give glowing reports. And recognizing, quite frankly, if we look very nearby, there are many, um. Many nearby jurisdictions that are not in this space. Not only are they not in a space to consider increasing. But they're cutting and, and other, you know, things that quite frankly are, are difficult. So I just want to share that. I think, um, taking a step outside of the fishbowl, you know, just again, first of all, recognizing what it's taken to be in a place. For us to do this and doing it at a time when, quite frankly, many, um. Budgets are being cut and many services are being scaled back. And I, I think that there's a lot of credit that goes into of the years. Of, of management of this. So I just want to put that out there because I think it's very striking for us to be able to do this now when many others are unable to do it.
Thank our residents. Who've been very lucky. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, um, while we can't do everything at once or all in the, in one budget. Uh, as I've said before, it's, it's a reflection of our values and I think that's one very much, um, uh. Tells that story. So, uh, with that, uh, Joel and then George.
Uh, hey, Michael, nice work. Uh, tremendous amount of progress over a very brief period of time. Uh, so thank you, uh, especially the past couple of weeks. Uh, you too, Andrew. Uh, there's a lot to be happy about those past couple of weeks and those projects. So, uh, all I wanted to say was thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Happy birthday, Michael. Happy six months.
Thank you.
Yeah. Happy, happy six months. Um, hopefully, George and then Lynn.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. Um, so really quickly, I wanted to just flag one thing I forgot to mention during the. Committee thing, which is we had a very successful candidate forum. The recording for that is available on the village website. So if, uh, anyone did not have the opportunity to attend, um, uh, the recording is online. Um, the other thing is just a quick clarification. I misspoke earlier. People, the deadline for being added to the voter roll was actually yesterday. It was, so no one can be added to the voter roll at this point. Um, the election plan says that closed on election night. The eighteenth is the deadline. For requesting a replacement ballot. That's eight o'clock on May eighteenth is the deadline for requesting a replacement ballot. Unfortunately, the deadline for being added to the voter roll is, was yesterday. Um, and that relates to one that we have been getting a helpful one from residents this year. If. Ballots have arrived at your house for people who are no longer residents, please let us know because that will help us update the voter roll. We've had some people flag. Hey, this ballot came for my kids. They're not living here anymore, et cetera. So that way we can make sure they're cleared up and this isn't an issue in future one. But I, I did just need to clarify that because I misspoke earlier. I was looking at the wrong part of the plan. So.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Lynn?
Uh, regarding the snow removal, uh, uh, and the upcoming RFP. Uh, when they were doing the sidewalk, could it also be included that they shovel around the fire hydrants? Uh, that's particularly important when the snow gets really, really deep. And if there is a, an, an event, uh, it'd be nice to have the, the snow removed from around the fire hydrants. So that the, the crew can not have to be delayed by hooking up their hoses.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea. Okay, Lynn, I think that's.
On this, uh, upcoming RFP, oh, what is the date for it? I have some ideas. I'd like to contribute.
With the RFP for widening of Quincy, uh, yeah.
No, 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 no. The, 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 the snow removal leaf thing, the, the, the thing with rolling acres is that RFP.
I don't know.
We, we.
There, there, there was a statement made earlier that there was an upcoming RFP. I thought it was re.
Well, the, the, the sidewalk snow shoveling would be, it would be a new contract. Um. So I'm not sure if that would be rolled into the current contract or whether it would be a standalone separate contract, but that's the, that's the question.
But, but it has an RFP gone out on it or is it coming up?
No, we just voted on it. So, so it wasn't clear how this would go and, you know, voted up or down. So now, now. Now we have to move forward with, with a lot of these, including the composting, uh, RFP and the, the Quincy widening, I think is well on its way. Um, but this is, yeah, this is all based on decisions and votes that were held tonight, like.
I see. Okay. Well, I, I, if, if it's not too late for input to an RFP for leaf removal. Uh, the, the street cleaning and the snow removal, um, I, I would like to be, have the opportunity to. For input.
Okay, well, Michael is all ears, so feel free to send him an email, um, or swing by during business hours.
Well, I will do email because that, that way there's a record.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Okay, so at this point, um, I'm going to, uh, uh, entertain a motion. In open session to enter into a closed session in accordance with section three dash three oh five B of the Open Meetings Act. Mail and Code General Provisions Article. Someone would like to.
We need to, we need to also state paragraph one regarding a personnel matter and paragraph seven to obtain legal advice. Personnel involves one or more people over whom the village has jurisdiction and the legal advice will pertain to. Parking enforcement.
So we just did that with your comments, correct?
Yes, someone can say so moved.
All right, so a second?
Yeah.
Second, so motion second, all in favor, say aye.
And aye.
All right.
Bless and good night.
Thank you, everybody.